the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker will be permitted three minutes to address the council. Thank you for participating in your city government. Tonight's invocation will be given by Father Mark Waiter from Blessed Sacramento Catholic Church. Please rise and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
If you'd like to pray, bow your heads. Heavenly Father, Creator of all things and giver of all good gifts, we thank you for having the privilege of serving our city of Claremont. We pray, Father, that as we discuss our agenda and craft policies for our city, we will always put the people's interests above our own. I ask that you watch over our mayor, Tim Murray, all the council members, and all who serve. As the hurricane season approaches, I ask that you keep our police, firefighters, park rangers, and all first responders under your watchful eye and safe from harm. You have said that citizens should obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. We ask that they will continue to guide our great city of Claremont. Remind us, Father, that we are in this position not to be served, but to serve the public and to help those less fortunate. I also pray, Father, that we will uphold what is moral and rational. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's we have a budget introduction and demonstration from Finance Director Burrow. Scott.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Scott Burrow, Finance Director, and thanks for this opportunity. We've prepared a couple of things for you for this presentation in order to set the table for the upcoming budget process. First, a few slides talking about the process and a little bit of background historical information for the council to think about leading into those meetings. Then, secondly, we'll give you a sneak peek preview into the new platform that'll be available to the public and push out a lot of information and help in our transparency efforts. So, to begin, the budget calendar itself. At the staff level, we're well into that process. The departments have submitted their proposed budgets for this cycle to the department. We are in the process of compiling that information, reviewing it, and in preparation for the city manager review meetings with each department throughout the month of June. We anticipate releasing the city manager's recommended budget on or about July 1st, followed, of course, by the workshops that have already been scheduled. And then, ultimately, in the month of July, the first significant city council action will be the passage of the proposed, or also known as the maximum, ad valorem millage rate for the next cycle. The important thing to remember, a reminder, with that action, the council is establishing what the maximum millage rate will be able to be passed when we pass those resolutions in September. So, between those two points in time, council will still have the ability to reduce, but you will not have the ability to increase it following that action. Speaking of ad valorem, here's a six-year historical summary of past action. Several things on here I'd like to point out to the council. First thing is that second column labeled taxable value growth rate. As you can see on there, the city of Claremont's experienced some very healthy double-digit growth rates in recent years. We will get the updated numbers in the early part of June. Our understanding at this point in time is to expect a growth rate this year of around 5%. But obviously, by the time we get into the workshop meetings, we'll know exactly what that is, and we'll be able to make decisions off that update from the county. Last year's adopted rate of 4.88 equated to about $26.7 million, and that covered almost half of the expenses within the general fund in terms of our budgeted numbers last year. And finally, that note down on the bottom is an important one as you consider what action you may ultimately take with the rate, whether it was up or down. Based on last year's number, a 0.1% change in the mill equated to about $560,000. But again, we'll have updated numbers on those for your decision-making when we get into the workshops. In terms of the health of the general fund, prepare this slide to give you an idea of what was available in terms of resources beyond the projected revenues. When people think about the fund balance, there's actually four components to the fund balance. But the portion that is discretionary or available to the council to utilize is the unassigned fund balance portion. We do have a 25% policy requirement that is the city's policy. We control that. We can adjust it as necessary or however you deem fit. Based off of the 23 audit numbers, we are at about 55.9% of our fund balance requirement. So, we had amounts in excess of $12 million available to use at your discretion. Again, much similar to the ad valorem process, by the time we get to the workshop, we will have our 24 audit completed on time. Yay. You'll be working with current information. But I put some projections on that bottom line, but again, we will update those at that time. I'm estimating right now we're going to be in the range of $15 million of excess funds available to council to utilize. So, the question quickly becomes, how do you utilize that money, if at all? So, I've listed some options on here. Won't go as far as calling them recommendations at this point, but these are the types of things that, if you're interested in, I'll bring forth in more detail in a later discussion. Now, the term structural deficit is taboo to people like me. There's long-term concerns with that. But the state of Florida does allow for the adoption of a budget that isn't a deficit as long as you have reserves available to make up that deficit. And of course, as just established, we do. In fact, the last couple of budgets, we've taken advantage of that process, albeit in minor, relatively minor amounts. So, you do have the ability, or you will have the ability, to make decisions to add additional capital projects within the general fund, expand services if you wish. But again, as I just mentioned, this is in specific to governmental activities and the general fund purposes. This does not impact water, sewer, trash, or enterprise activities. Items number two and three on there are, again, I'll bring in more information to the council if you're interested. As I emphasized a few moments ago, that reserve policy is our policy. We could update that. One of the things we could do, for instance, is we could make a statement that says if the ratio is between 25 and 35%, we could dedicate that to capital in some way, shape, or form. Those are the types of things that, again, because it's our policy, we can make those adjustments. And then, the third item down there would certainly be a new item. It's an emerging trend within local government, and that is the establishment of irrevocable trust accounts to be dedicated towards long-term debt obligations, specifically talking about pension stabilization and no-PEP funding. All right, now to the fun part. As I mentioned, the budget book we anticipate being released on or around July 1st. We will provide department directors and city council members hard copies of this. But what we're really excited about this year is the introduction of what we call an online budget book. And this is going to, as I said earlier, improve with the transparency of the budget on how the city utilizes our resources with a lot of detail within it. And it's a movement away from the line item budgets that have existed in Excel format in the past, and it's adopting the recommendations and the principles of the GFOA as it relates to budgeting. So, it's a communication tool. It's a policy manual, a lot of detail. So, I'm going to, with that, transition out of the PowerPoint and take you to that. This is not yet available on the web, but once it is on or around July 1st, this will probably be publicly available. And I'm going to highlight a few things, just a few things that are on here right now. As you can see, we've got these headers, introduction, budget overview, executive summary. These are sections that are a part of that GFOA recommendation. And a side note, much like the audit program, they also have an award program attached to the budget process. So, we'll be pursuing that as part of this as well. I've been fortunate enough to be part of that in the past, and a lot of good things come from that. So, in these first three sections, you're telling a story at a high level. And I'm going to click into a few of these just to give you an idea of the quality of the work here. It's going to, under the city profile, pictures, charts, graphs, data tables, a lot of narrative talking about who we are and what we do and how we do it. We'll have some economic stats on here. The idea is someone, for instance, from Arizona could pick this up and learn all about city of Claremont. Again, a communication tool, as GFOA says. Under budget overview, page talking about our budget process, our cycle, there's the calendar that I just showed you in the PowerPoint. There is the trim history I just showed you, and then talking about our workshop and budget adoption process, and even talking about the basis of the budgeting and when appropriations lapse, and even our process for admitting the budget. So, you know, budgeting 101 is what we're here. We're informing the public as to how we operate or manage our budget. And taking that a step forward, we get into our fund structure on this page, talking about how fund accounting is what we follow. It's a system of accountability and transparency as opposed to profitability. And then, we get into a description of the different fund types. And this is the first example of, well, one of the great things about this platform is there's numerous ways to get to the same information. So, nothing here is linked at this point, but once we release this publicly, all of these funds will have links to the fund summary, talks about the purpose of the summary of the fund, and all the detail behind it. And here's your first glimpse at data on this page. This is just simple table showing revenue and expenditure totals by fund, current year in comparison to the proposed, and then the percentage change. And I just was reminded to myself, as I go through these remaining pages, please, 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 public service announcement, do not dwell on the numbers. These are not even in a draft format yet. The purpose of this is just to show you, you know, what this platform's going to look like. All right, let me go back. I've got a couple more pages to show you. Under executive summary, this is when we'll start drilling down into specifics with revenues, expenses, fund balance history. We do have one page here I can show you today. This is showing the public about our debt management, showing, talking specifically about the five existing bond issuances and bank notes that we have, how we utilize those funds, pictures that accompany them. And then, down at the bottom, we have our annual debt service payments. So, we're pushing out to the public what our debt obligations are, so one can quickly see with this bond here, last payment about $476,000 a year, last payment during fiscal year '29, so on and so forth. All right, so now I'm going to go down to the bottom section here, and this is where we really get into a lot of the detail at the department level and in a capital plan, which I'll talk about in a second. What I have to show you today is an example of the finance department page. And obviously, some departments are a lot more complex than others, but in general, they'll all look very similar to this. At each department level, we'll talk about the overview, expenditure by category, up at the top, getting into goals and objectives of each department, showing an org chart for each department, talk about staffing proposal changes, and then actually data tables related to staffing as well. One of the nice things about this is we'll be able to show on here when vacancies exist. You can see a certain amount of history related to that as well. In our case, as you can see, I've got this divided by our finance accounting division and then utility division. And then, finally, you get to the detail of the finance department budget within the general fund, again, with some historical information, current year versus proposed year, percentage changes, and then highlights by category, here being personnel. A little bit further down, directors will have the ability to speak to the proposed changes. And then, finally, on each page, we'll have a certain level of degree of KPIs, talking about the different activities within the department. And, you know, that could help justify anything from capital investments to potential staffing changes, but we want to provide workloads as to what each department does. And final thing to show you today, we have prepared a five-year cap, or we're in the process of preparing a five-year capital plan. Now, when it comes time to actually adopting the resolution of the budget, what council's action will do is adopt year one of that five-year plan. But obviously, years two through five is a statement of intention, which helps with, you know, long-term planning and growth management. And we'll be able to provide these reports in various manners. In this particular one, you can see we're showing it five years, buildings, sidewalks, streets, vehicle replacement programs. As I scroll down, we'll show it in a couple other different ways here. Here's the same data shown by department. Here's the same data shown by funding source at the fund level. And then, as I go down further, now you start getting into specific projects. And like those other pages I've shown you, these will all be linked as well to pages specific to those projects, which I will show you in a second. And we've got these grouped by, in three different ways currently. One, which is non-recurring projects. These are one-off projects, you know, specialty projects or purchases. Another grouping by reoccurring, this would be street maintenance programs, vehicle replacement, sidewalk programs, so on and so forth. And then, finally, we'll get down into a grouping of non-recurring projects. So, these are one-time investments in specific items in years two through five of the plan. So, these are one-time investments in specific items in years two through five of the plan. So, last thing to show you is I'm going to go back up here a little bit and show you some of these specific project pages. We've highlighted here the Midas in the Middle project, and again, the data that it is in here is not prepared, but the layout is. This particular project, we're going to present to council as three sub-projects. So, I'm going to go to the main project page here, and each one will start off with a project description, will have numerous types of pictures and architectural renderings, followed by cost estimates. These are linked to the three sub-projects here. And, I'm going to go into the one for the Plaza right now. And, this is at the lowest level. We've drilled all the way down to the bottom of the sub-project. And, here, you can see the accounting reference information with more pictures. And, this is where we get into a lot of the narratives on the project, talking about the justification and the purpose of the project, the cost estimate, and if it's going to pass over into multiple fiscal years. And then, this is light on information right now, but more justifications, we'll have specifics on funding sources and operational impacts, and as many pictures to our hearts' content on these proposals. So, that's all I've prepared to show you today for this platform. We're really quite excited about this and hope that it's well received by the public, and as I said, helps in those transparency efforts. I appreciate your attention. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, first of all, Scott, let me say thank you. I know, as we've been working on trying to get this implemented for a couple of years, a year or two now, and everything, so thank you for finally getting this updated and everything. Back in the beginning, you said July 22nd meeting. Isn't that, shouldn't that be the 29th of July?
I think we're voting on that tonight.
Oh, okay, okay. Growth rate, you said it was 16% growth rate in Ad Valorem and everything. That's great, but I need to make sure the public understand, while you may have seen a 16% increase in the value of your homes and everything, or whatever it turns out to be, 5%, we can only increase Ad Valorem for tax purposes, it can only be 3% state law, okay? So, don't think we can, we're going to be taxing you on all that increase and everything. So, I'd just like you always make sure the public understand that. Other thing, the five-year capital year, I know that's something, of course, I talked about when I first got elected, five-year capital plan. Are we planning on extending it out to five to 10 years as well? Because I like doing three, five, and 10-year capital plans. So, I know, right now, we got to five, so we good, okay? At least we got that far so far. But, hopefully, in the future, we can extend that out to at least 10 years and everything down the road, okay? So, but other than that, I think that you've done a great job and everything, and I'm looking forward to being able to work with this. I know this is new software and everything that we've just been trying to get implemented for the last year or two, so it's looking good.
Thank you, Mayor. And, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the work of our budget manager, Mr. Kyle Pride, who I think is close to me somewhere. He is the architect behind this and been working hard on it for some time. And, you know, the great thing, budgeting is my favorite part of the job, I'll be honest. And, one of the reasons why is budgeting is truly a team effort. Every single department contributes to the budget process, and this software platform is indicative of that. So, kudos to the entire city management team as we're working through this, and we still have work to do, but thank you for the kind words.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Great job.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll indulge me just a moment. Mr. Bora, this is fantastic. Kyle, this is fantastic. I think this is excellent for a citizen, or anyone interested in coming to Claremont, to be able to go to our website and see this level of detail is the ultimate transparency, and I appreciate that and the hard work that's gone into this, and all the department heads who are having to adjust the way that they're doing business to be able to provide this detail to the citizens. I appreciate you just hitting this as well. I think this is fantastic. So, I thank you. I have two questions. They both relate to this year's audit. The first one, it is my understanding we got an extension, which I understand and completely am for. Did I hear you say that this year's audit will be done timely?
Before I answer the question, let me just clarify. The state's deadline is June 30th.
Okay.
So, we did not get an extension related to that, relation to that. We will, all indications are from CRI, I'm going to have a draft by the end of May, which will put us in a position to be able to submit by June 30th and meet the state's deadline. The extension you're referring to is in relation to the award program from the GFOA. Their deadline for submission for consideration of the award is the end of March. And, I have received extensions through May in order to apply for that award, and will have to apply for one more extension into June for that.
That's exciting. Thank you for that. That is a big change. For the members of the public who aren't aware, we have had some issues hitting our deadlines on auditing over the last several years. And, what Mr. Bora and his team have done to bring this to a completion, to have a timely audit, and potentially a GFOA certification, which would just be the cherry on top of that, would be unbelievable, and that's a heck of a turnaround, sir. That's a great job by everybody on your team.
Thank you.
And, I do want to let the public know as well that, I think it was our last meeting, Mr. Bora has been giving us, as up-to-date as he can, financials, and it used to be that we were two, three months behind, and at our last meeting, we finally got exactly where we need to be, where we're getting current reporting from our finance office. So, that's a big change. I know you've worked a lot of late nights to make that happen, and I know it hasn't been easy, and so I appreciate you very much for doing that.
Well, thank you. We have a wonderful team that contributed towards that. Thanks for the recognition.
I also would like to echo thank you, again, as she has said, for your hard work and your team. And, please let your team know that we sincerely appreciate the work that they have been doing to bring the numbers up-to-date for us and getting this. I remember, we talked about this last year, about the system is, I'm excited for you all, so I can't wait to have it live, so we can play with it and see how it goes, but I thank you so very much.
Thank you.
So, I do know that, I've talked with Stormy in Public Works on some of this, and I guess this goes along the lines of our long-term budgeting plans, but if we could have the information on end-of-life, our expectations on end-of-life, whether it be roofs, major maintenance issues that we know need to happen, that would be helpful, not only to council, but I think to other people as well, to understand that these things were out, they're very expensive to replace, and it, I know they're not going to necessarily fall in the five-year, but it would help us. I mean, I know that we had roof issues that got, that were prolonged. Same with waste bar management. How long are each of those pieces going to last, and what is their replacement? And, I think that's an important part for council to understand. If we want to reduce our debt, I mean, within the next six years, the majority of our debt will have expired and will be in a great position. And, while I'm not a super fan of debt, I understand that sometimes it's necessary, especially for big expenditures, but if we're able to plan better, then we can reduce that need to go into that well, and makes us fiscally stronger. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Scott, again. I thank you for all the work you've done. I know you've been putting in a lot of long hours. I know what we've been trying to get accomplished in the last year or two, and you've done a fantastic job, and I thank you for it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right, the next item is public comment. Anyone who wishes to address the council, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. This portion of the meeting for items that are not on the agenda, in the interest of time, efficiency, and reassuring that everyone who wishes to address the council are given the opportunity to do so. Each speaker will be permitted three minutes to address the council. To avoid disruption of the meeting, speakers should avoid inappropriate language, personal attacks, derogatory statement, and direct their comments to the city council. Everyone is requested to be respectful, even when we disagree. This is public comment. Anyone for public comment?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Paula Hoysington from 564 East DeSoto Street. I'm here to kind of talk about processes of the city. During the last, I'm glad to see that we have an update on the firm to choose the city manager. During the last city council meeting, there was much discussion on whether the interim city manager would choose to fire or the police chief, or would we advertise that we promote someone from within. I ask you that we all, that we look at processes in which we make these decisions. Where I am a strong supporter of promoting from within when it is appropriate, I also do not believe in promoting just because of length of time. If I am the most qualified applicant, and I've been here for 20, 30 years, it doesn't matter if you get 50 applicants, because if I am the best, the cream is going to rise to the top. But, if we don't allow that opportunity, we deny ourselves the opportunity of looking at someone who may have other ideas, better ideas, or choose a person from within. I just ask that you carefully look at the process. The same thing with the process in which we chose our interim city manager. I have nothing against Mr. Van Wagner. My issue has always been with the process in which he was chosen. We're going on with our second 90-day period. We, the people, did not receive any type of update of how the first 90 days went. I think if we go back on record, he mentioned that he was kind of over his head, therefore we have a deputy city manager and welcome. But, I don't see anything where you all, who are responsible for the city manager, has done any type of evaluation for him to let the city know exactly how he has been performing. I think all of our city employees do have some type of evaluations with their supervisors to let them know whether they are meeting standards, below standards, and if they are not, then appropriate action is taken. I don't know if there's a process to do that, whether it's the interim city manager or the permanent city manager. How do you let someone run the city and there's no evaluation of that person's progress? But, yet, you hold our employees, our line staff, our supervisors, to a different standard where every day, they are held accountable. And, if they are not performing, then appropriate action is taken. So, I'm asking you, I don't know, city manager reports just to the mayor or to the council as a group, but you have a responsibility to ensure that you evaluate the process, that they are meeting the requirements of the contract on which you gave him, and report back to the city. We have yet to get that, but yet, employees are getting evaluations every day. And, if they don't perform, this excellent budget presentation that we just received, if he was not performing up the standard to produce the work that you wanted, there would be some type of action taken, and the public would know. I'm just asking you to look at your process in which you manage, you are hired to run the city, to manage the city, and not have selective processes on those that you want to continue doing something, but those that are doing the work every day, boots on the ground, are held to a different standard. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Sharon Duponti. I represent Rose of Sharon Ministries, a homeless and recovery outreach ministry. We met with, excuse me, we met with Chief Graezek, May 7th, Julia Darts and her husband from I Am a Safe Place that we partner with, Pastor Drew Marshall from South Lake Presbyterian Church, and Gio Garcia, who's the ministry lead at New Beginnings Thrift Store. So, we met with Chief Graezek because I have a lot of concerns about, you know, I spoke with Broadway before he left, a lot of concerns about issues with mental health and people out there, and just the fact that there seems to be a lot more homeless people in the area than people think there are. So, I've been out there almost, well, almost four years, three years almost as a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit. So, I count 30 in Claremont that I directly interact with. In Claremont and Mineola, I'm not sure their location, there's at least 10. And then, in Mineola, there's 10 to 15. Now, there's one person in particular, the man under the bridge, I'm not going to say his name, he didn't want any help, but he obviously was, had serious mental health issues. And, I had interacted with him about January 15th, because another homeless person alerted me to him being, laying on the ground, looked injured, maybe not even alive. So, I told her to wait and meet me there, and I went over and talked to him, and he had blood all over his head. He said he passed out because a chemical truck exposed him to toxic fumes, which I didn't believe, but that's what he thought. So, anyway, I thought he was dehydrated. I used to be a paramedic. I'm not out there trying to be a paramedic, but I have CPR and first aid. So, I offered him some water. He took the water, he refused to take food, and I said, "I think you need to get checked out at the hospital." I was hoping that he would be Baker-acted, and he would be brought to the hospital, get his medical needs taken care of, and his mental health situation evaluated. So, we called 911, and the ambulance, the fire truck, and two police cars came, and I stayed back minding my own business. But, before I walked away from him and called 911, and this isn't the first person I've had this happen with, he was sitting on the sidewalk wiping the blood off his head, and he reached down, just before I left, I saw out of the corner of my eye, he reached down to what apparently was an ostomy stoma, and he was squeezing feces into a plastic bag as he sat there on the sidewalk. So, I was kind of mortified, and I really thought that he was going to be taken to the hospital, and they didn't do anything with him. The next day, no, not the next day, almost two weeks later, somebody on, sorry, I'll finish real quick, somebody on Facebook tagged Claremont PD and Chief Broadway saying, "When the F are you going to get this guy out of here?" The next day, he was arrested for littering. So, we have situations like that, and he's currently got a hearing on May 15th, this gentleman, and a competency hearing to see if he's going to be released back out into public. But, you know, Chief Graezek was very gracious about assisting us, and I said, you know, maybe we can form a task force, or some kind of team like they have in Orlando, because we go out there and we do referrals, we give them food, basic needs, pretty much try to help them stay alive until they're ready to do something different. And, we've worked directly with Officer Diaz, too, sometimes on his personal time. So, we were hoping that we could form a task force, but the only people we are not getting help from, we have a lot of people in the community, a lot of businesses helping us financially and otherwise, the city and the county are doing nothing. So, I respectfully request that maybe we could have some kind of roundtable meeting with more people at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Farmer Banks Helfrich, Clayrod District, South Lake County. Farm tip of the day, loquats, also known as Japanese plums, grow like weeds in Florida. They are yellow or orange in coloration as far as their fruit is concerned. They're considered first fruits. They fruit at the beginning of the year, and they only have a fruit life of about 14 days. They're ornamental, and they're also fruit-bearing. Mayor, council distinguished guests, newly-elected mayor of Groveland, in his swearing-in speech, made two points extremely clear. One, that the citizens are the leaders, and two, that the, those who they select are the servants to the people, and I cannot agree more with them. Once a year, in some cities, every two years, in county, state, and federal elections, the citizens come out and they lead. They decide, they choose, and they vote for their representatives. Those representatives' jobs are to serve the people. The complications of our government, the government for which we are in, the servants are there to navigate us through the complications of it. Roughly 20 years ago, my mother had an issue with her state representative. She reached out to him, she spoke to an assistant. The assistant said, "Your state representative will contact you within 24 hours." Within one hour, he had called her up, he had spoken to my mother, my mother had expressed her issue. He said, "Don't worry, I will take care of it within 12 hours." Within one hour, that issue was resolved. That man ended up being the Speaker of the House in Tallahassee. I'm going to leave you with one question, and that is, if we here, and that means everyone, not only you on the not only you on the dais, if we are here not to serve, why are we? I am Farmer Banks Helfrich. Thank you for allowing me to speak. May you all be blessed.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Sharon Keyes, six-four-four West Osceola Street, and I'm here to say thank you to the city for partnering with us, and about ten other organizations for our Juneteenth this year. It's gonna be on June twenty-first, from three to seven. We would love for everybody to come out and celebrate with us. We also have a artist, well, an art and essay contest for children from grades K five up until high school. So it's pretty much letting us know and sharing your thoughts and reflections on Juneteenth. And we would love to let everybody know in the public that we're having this essay, and the deadline is June first. Thank you again, we appreciate the partnership.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is public comment. Anyone in the public wish to address item that's not on the agenda, may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, a closed public comment. And before we move on, Mr. Van Wagner, do we have any changes to the agenda?
There's no changes to the agenda.
Okay. Well, in that case, the next portion of the meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine, non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wished to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now it's an opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. The consent items tonight are items one through thirteen. Okay, anyone wish anything to be removed from the consent agenda? Is there anything need to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, all, I consider a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda items one through thirteen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair vote aye as well. Please note, in that consent agenda item, July twenty-second meeting has been moved to July twenty-ninth. Okay, all right. Next up, well, we have no old business, so the next up is new business. Wow.
And just for council, we're gonna have some stuff that could run on here really for a very long time, and according to our rules, we each have three minutes to speak. So I have asked that we do run that timer to make sure we all stay on time and point. Thank you.
I appreciate you holding me accountable.
Item number fourteen, resolution number two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-one-two-R.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, authorizing budget amendments for the City of Claremont for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four,
Yes, sir.
Thank you again, Mayor, Council, Scott Boer, Finance Director. This is a single-item budget amendment proposal. It is a proposal to authorize the use of one million, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars from Fund Balance Reserves and the General Fund to be utilized for a inter-fund transfer to the Fire Impact Fees Fund. Reason being is to reimburse that fund for the acquisition and the reconstruction of the building at six-fifty Montrose Street across the street. Once the decision was made not to utilize that for fire department purposes, we're in order to remain in compliance with the use of fire impact fees, that fund needs to be reimbursed. Glad to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you, all right. If we have any, we'll get back with you. But this is a public hearing, anyone in the public wish to address this item, may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. This is a public hearing, anyone in the public which to address this item, may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. Seeing none, a closed public comment, and bring it back to council. What say council?
So I'm okay with moving it over. However, we still need to address the issue of surplus property, which this hopefully will become one. So how can we handle surplus property in a large part inclusive of this?
I second that question.
Have a motion and a second for the approval of item.
I didn't make a motion. I was just asking a question.
I'd be happy to bring, we've sat with the staff, and we have a list of surplus property that we're not currently using, that you all could look at and see if you have a vision for that or what you'd like to do with it. So we've identified that and taken time to do that already.
In that case, I'm. In that case, I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-twenty-five-dash-zero-one-two-R, budget amendment number three.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval of item number fourteen, resolution number two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-one-two-R, budget amendment in amount of one-point-two million. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair vote aye as well. Motion passes five oh. Item number fifteen is for consideration of changing council meeting time on the fourth Tuesday of the month.
Right, this agenda item was added at the request of Councilmember Peterson. The request is to change the start time from, of the fourth meeting of the month from five-thirty to three P.M.
That's it? Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone in the public wish to address this item, may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. Anyone in the public wish to address this item, may come to.
Thank you, Brian Bain, two forty-five Nautica Mile Drive. We've only had three meetings with the new times. I think this is incredibly premature to say it's a rounding success when there's only been one five-thirty meeting. I think it's, I think it's just incredibly premature to decide changing a meeting time based off one meeting, let alone the issues with moving all of our meetings to three o'clock, which have been discussed before. So I'd encourage you to vote this down and not make any changes for the rest of the year and make an assessment in January. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paula Hoyzington, five sixty-four East DeSoto Street. I hundred percent agree with Mr. Brian, really trying to understand the process of doing this, the necessity of doing this. And as he said, we've only had three meetings. You have not even had an opportunity for the citizens to be properly engaged in the time change. You've had three meetings, and now you want to upset everything again and make a recommendation, possibly vote that they both be at three, when you haven't evaluated or received any feedback from the people who voted you in office, to see whether three o'clock, five o'clock, six o'clock is in the best interest of the majority of the citizens or just a few in one neighborhood. Again, asking you to look at processes and the things that you do and the decisions that you make and how they impact the people who put you in office versus a personal decision to change the time that may be more convenient for you or a few people in your neighborhood. If you could please look at process and how they impact the people who put you in office, to make sound decisions, to ensure that this opportunity allows for, as we say, the choice of champions, not the choice of one or two or three. Thank you.
Fran Falcone, three-nine-oh-four Dune Way. I have to agree with the first two speakers. You've only had a few meetings. It's not really enough time to evaluate the attendance. I understand and appreciate the change to three o'clock to allow the seniors who don't wanna drive at night a chance to attend the meeting. By moving everything to the daytime, then you're eliminating those people who work or have a hard time getting here during the day. I agree that you should have a longer period of time to evaluate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is a public hearing, anyone in the public which to address this item, may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, a closed public comment, bring it back to council. What say council?
Well, I've, I know a lot of people are thinking this is premature, but since I was elected in November, I've gotten a lot of calls to bring the meeting times to a more reasonable time of the day for the over fifty-five group. Now, statistically, in Claremont, fifty-one percent of the people are over fifty-five, and decisions are made better statistically in the daytime than as opposed at night. And we do have a responsibility to the citizens to make good decisions and make correct decisions. And if we're making decisions at eleven, twelve o'clock at night, these decisions cannot be the best for the people. And we are thinking of "we, the people" in this respect. So, I mean, I just wanna bring this up. I think it's an important thing to do, but, I mean, I'm not gonna say I'm gonna force it down everybody's throat. I mean, other localities in Florida have early meetings, too, like Orlando has nine o'clock in the morning meetings. So I would imagine that same thing happens with them. What about the working people? Well, they, if you have, I guess, if I was a working person and I had a thing that was on my mind, on the agenda, I would make it my business to be at the meeting for that particular meeting. With that, I bring it to the council for their comments.
So I think there's two issues here. I keep hearing that, you know, we have to be held responsible to the people. I received, I believe, two emails on twenty-four agenda items. I am super available. It is not hard to get ahold of me with my personal phone number, my public cellphone number, my emails. I'm really easy to get ahold of. So if somebody wants to discuss an agenda item, it can be done before it gets to here. And to be honest, it's better to be done before it gets to here. You know, if I had a magic wand, I'd make them all at ten o'clock in the morning. It works better for staff, it works better for everybody. I don't have that magic wand. So I don't have a problem with three. I think that having daytime meetings is smart. I think it's better for staff, I think it's better for our abilities as a council. I certainly don't like being here until eleven o'clock at night. I think it forces us to get into a hurry when we shouldn't be. And as those times drag on, you know, we had kids out here a few times, I had to go get snacks for kids who were stuck here till eleven o'clock at night waiting on us to get through agenda items, and that's not fair to the citizens either. So I think there's a, there is a process in there. I don't disagree with Paula, that there should be some process, but that process should look at what is the most important avenue for us to make quality decisions, and it should also involve our staff. Our staff is an integral part of here, and they certainly don't need to be here till eleven, twelve o'clock at night. So for me, I can support it. You know, whatever council wants to do, I'm good with both. But like I said, you know, I support daytime meetings, I think they're important.
And I'm indifferent on this one. Mr. Peterson, I wanted to hear what you had to say since you had brought it. For me, whether it's five-thirty or it's three, I'll be here. I think the points are well-made on all sides. I tend to lean towards, let's make kind of an announcement that we're considering it and encourage the public. You know, we have the budget cycle coming up, and that's gonna kind of be a bunch of workshops, and I think things will feel very different during those couple months anyway. So I'm happy either way. I'm not, you know, gonna argue one way or the other, so whatever kind of works for council. I like that three o'clock, I presume that three o'clock is also good for the business community in addition to staff. And I think that's important as we talk about these development conversations that we've been having, is that we're, I think the best point you made, Mr. Peterson, is the sound mind. I mean, three to six is, you're much more focused from three to six than you are from five-thirty to eight-thirty. But I'm happy with whatever time, so I'm interested in hearing Mr. Mayor and Ms. Myers what you think, because I'm happy to wait, I'm happy to say yes, I'm happy to say no.
I see both sides as well, but I lean toward the earlier just because of the better decision-making, because ten o'clock, we're not making good decisions, ten, eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning. And as already said by Mr. Howard, if you wanna get ahold of us, you can. If it's important, you can. But I do believe that we do need to give it some time before to let the public know and not just spring it on. But I'm for either way, but, you know, it depends on what council says, but personally, I prefer the three o'clock one.
Well, okay. Well, I tend to not support that move, as I didn't support the other one for three o'clock. For another reason, you're right, so they say you can make better decisions earlier with to be, the decision, the decision whether it's in the morning, in the afternoon. It's kinda like saying, for the last twenty years that I know of, I've been associated with this council, we've been making bad decisions, because all our council meetings have been at night, okay? For the last twenty years that I've been back, okay? And like I say, when I first got back, the council meeting was actually at seven o'clock at night, and we moved it up to six-thirty. And the reason being is, is we've always tried to give the people opportunity to get here. As I stated before, over fifty percent, fifty, sixty percent of our residents commute, okay, back and forth to work. We always complain about traffic. So if they're getting off at five o'clock, they try to get here at five-thirty, six o'clock, it's very tough. That's why I've had requests to move it back to seven o'clock, okay? I'm comfortable with six-thirty, even though I wasn't happy with it when they moved it from seven to six, but I'm comfortable with six-thirty, I'm still not comfortable with the three o'clock. To me, it's still rushing. I take and look at it, I look at who's out here right now. I don't see many senior citizens out here today, okay? And most of the people in the audience are young, as we have some seniors out there, and most of the staff, I'm a senior myself, and most of the, most people I see out there is pretty much staff, okay? So I haven't really seen a real increase in participation in the audience. I know the first couple of meetings we had, yeah, they were full. But of course, keep in mind, those times, we had special presentations that was going on, that brought the people out. Soon as the presentation was gone over, the room just basically emptied, okay? Now, I always say I'm one-on-one vote up here. If that's what you all decide to do, that's fine. The thing is, not wanting to be here at late at night, I mean, we've been, that's was something that we knew when we ran for the office. And I've said it before, that's one of the reasons I did not run for office until I retired from the post office, because I knew the requirements to be here, okay? And another thing I feel hindered us greatly by moving it to three o'clock, is a lot, a lot of people out there that may wanna run for office, but their jobs may not allow them to be here at three o'clock in the afternoon. Where, for example, me, I couldn't have been here at three o'clock in the afternoon if I was still working. My job wouldn't allow that, okay? Most of us, I feel fortunate enough, you own a business and you have the time, the opportunity. And of course, me, I'm retired now, I don't think Ms. Myers worked, so she had the opportunity to be here. But what about those folks out there that may wanna decide to run for office and they have that hindrance, restraint, because their job won't allow them to be here at that time? So we choke ourselves off for that. So I still can't refuse. And just one other comment, Mr., we talking about making hurried decisions, we putting a three-minute limit on how long we can talk. So that's basically kind of forcing us to do things in a hurry anyway, all right? So that don't hold water with me. But I entertain a motion.
I'll take a motion to accept item number, number fifteen.
Go ahead.
You said you wanted to entertain a motion.
Yeah, I entertain a motion if there's seconds.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval of item, where we're at, fifteen, to remove council, fourth Tuesday council meeting to three o'clock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Chair opposes. Motion carries four to one. Item number sixteen is for consideration for participating in the Florida Department of Government Efficiency and Audit Program. Before I go in further, before I do that, okay, the motion passes, moved to three o'clock. Is that effective on the next council meeting or when?
I, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna point out, there was not, no clarification of that in the motion, so.
And I would, after looking at it and talking with planning and zoning, we have some things that we had to post, so I would not recommend this month doing that.
Should we do it next month?
Well, well, it would have to be advertised on that.
Well, I- Well, I'd ask that the council make a decision about that.
So let's do it starting July. That gives everybody plenty of time. And I think that solves some of the problems the council was concerned about.
So do we need to redo that whole motion, Mr. Waugh?
I'd like to ask that there be a reconsideration. First, there needs to be a a vote to reconsider first.
Motion to reconsider, item number fifteen, council meeting time change.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to reconsider item number fifteen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
I think reconsider is reconsider it to starting July.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, yes, we'll entertain a new motion, sir.
Motion, motion to approve item number fifteen, council meeting time change, starting in July.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second for item number fifteen, to change fourth Tuesday meeting to three o'clock, starting in July. That'd be July twenty-ninth, okay? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Chair opposes. This motion carries four to one. Item number sixteen again, consideration for participating in Florida Department of Government Efficiency Audit Program.
This is an agenda item that was added at the request of Councilmember Strange. The request is for the city to participate in the Florida Department of Government Efficiency Audit Program.
Okay.
Sure. Do you want me to speak on it now or after a public comment? No? So I want to start by saying there is absolutely nothing about this that, for me, is political. I don't like that the words have a political connotation to them. Back in the fall, Councilmember Howard submitted a request to the county clerk to do an audit. And it is my understanding that this program, which costs the city nothing in the way of dollars, is an audit of both finances and operations. Now, I'll say to the public and to my fellow council, I feel like what Mr. Borer has done gives me comfort as a citizen, that from a financial perspective, we are way more in tune with what's going on financially. That being said, the last three years, we have had real issues with timely reporting. And I'm actually as if not more interested in seeing what efficiencies might or or issues might come up in the operational audit, because something caused those delays. Something in a, in a process level, something in our systems and how we're functioning caused those delays. And I think for the citizens to have a peace of mind, especially as we go into the budget cycle, of saying, we have accepted a free service that's going to make recommendations that we don't have to follow, they're just recommendations, that has a third set of eyes looking at what is going on financially and operationally. And I don't see why we wouldn't do it unless we're letting politics get in the way. And I'll reiterate, there is nothing about this that's political for me. It's really about giving the public a sense of transparency and openness and a willingness by all of us to participate in answering questions that might come up that are grounded in trust or confidence, and that's why I wanted to do this.
I get where you're coming from. My concern is the level of work that our team will have to do, because they're getting the budget together, and they have to do the milage and all of that, because that's mandatory by the state. So that's my concern, is the timeline, and are we going to be overworking our people? That's what, that's my concern on it. But I agree that having that oversight is a plus, because we do need that. My concern is just the timeline, so.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Are you through your presentation, Ms. Strange?
Yes, sir.
Okay, before I, I'm sorry, I didn't want to cut you off. But let's open this up to the public first, and then I'll come back to the council, all right? This is a public. Yeah. Any, anyone in the public wish to address this item, may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. It's not on. Thank you.
Joe Famasi, twenty-six ninety-three, Jumping Jack Way. I agree with Councilman Strange that there needs to be a review of the last few years. As I pointed out in one of my comments prior council, thirty-six million dollars that the city is holding. I have another point on another agenda item that I'm going to make about money that was missed, that was owed to the city. So I'm full-heartedly behind this, and I think that who Councilman Howard asked to do the audit should be the Doge to do it. It should be an outside. It shouldn't have to be done by the staff here. This should be done by an outside, independent. And I'm full-hearted for this. Twenty-two, I have a lot of questions about what was taken in, what was spent out, why there was such a hesitation to present transparency. Twenty-three, I really think that you need to have this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Joe Zagami Jr. I am a, I own a portfolio of commercial real estate here in Claremont. And what prompted me to come up here was a comment you made, Mr. Mayor, at the beginning of the meeting, how tax rates are limited to three to five percent increases on an annual basis. Well, that's the case for residential homeowners. That's not the case for commercial landowners. I've seen real estate taxes on my properties increase thirty, forty, fifty percent in these recent years. Now, how do I plan for that? There's no limit. And when I'm faced with those kinds of taxes, that means I have to raise rents, and it's going to trickle right back to the citizens of this city. So from a tax perspective, commercial real estate owners are hurting, and we need some relief.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to address this item, may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, closed public comment. Bring it back to council. Yes, sir, Mr. Howard.
So on the.
Gosh dang it. On the audit programs, in a previous life, the problem with Claremont is we're not quite big enough to have an internal auditing office. School Board had a six-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar budget. We actually had an auditor who just presented information, whether it be process or financial, and worked through the entire system over a period of years. And that's really comforting to know, because when we start looking at those, those processes and the financials, it does take a third set of eyes to look at it, and I'm comfortable with that. I have, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't believe that the city has anything to hide, but I certainly believe that operationally and process-wise, that we can do better. I mean, every business can. I would love for somebody to say, hey, they're going to provide my business with a, with a Doge audit. Okay, come on in. Show me where I can save money. I think it's smart. I think it's, you know, I don't see it as a political thing, but I've also used that tool previously and found it very, very helpful. So I hundred percent support it.
I think we, we have to like, look at this, you know, like, like you said, not as a political thing, but something to, to look and see where all the money's going. And as Claremont's growing and growing, like we said, the, you know, if you have a quarter of a percent error, now you've, you've, you've increased it by fifty million dollars, then it becomes real money. And it's not that Claremont's going to hide something, but things can get lost in, in the weeds. And I think as being on the council, we do have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens to, to look at what's going on and to see if we can find monies that are going astray. Not that it's on purpose astray, but things will go astray. And I think is an important thing, and I'm totally for it.
Thank you. Mr. Van Wagner, can you speak to the issue of staff?
Sure. First of all, the city of Groveland just did this, and they submitted it, and it was twenty-six hundred pages, just to give you context, and they did it in a two-week period of time. I, I'm okay with somebody looking under the hood personally, but my concern is, my number one concern is getting that audit done on time, so we're not late this time. And secondly, it's to get that certification. I think that's very important. You guys have shared that with us. So if you choose to do that, we would need to ask for a potential increase in the time. And so I just want to make that very clear. We'll do whatever you want, but we may just need some additional time, because it, normally it's two weeks to do this up until this point.
Okay, yes, I think it, I was told it took them two weeks to go through this. However, it may take a little bit longer, since we're a little bit bigger than Groveland, okay? A little bit more. However, let me just say that I have no problem having to come in here. This is a free audit. However, this is about what was just being talked about processes and everything. It's not going to really determine whether the money is being missing. And of course, I've been debating, and I, I spoke to Mr. Van Wagner about it, and Mr. Waugh, and I just had a conversation about it, but if we really were, I, I keep hearing all these accusations about money's missing and things like this here. So if you really want to find out if anything's missing, I think this council owed, owed a city the opportunity to do a forensic audit, okay? That's going to, I'm not saying there's money missing and anything going wrong, but hey, that is the only audit that's going to dig down and see if anything is being misappropriated or taken or whatever. These type audits that they're talking about, Doge, is basically looking at operation and procedures, okay? It's not going to go. As Mr. Waugh and I just spoke, of course, I've been, I asked for this when I first got elected for forensic audit, to set the tables and see, see where the city was at, because I've always heard about money being misappropriated and all this here. Previous council did not vote to do the forensic audit. I know we have funds in, in, in the fund balance that can pay for a forensic audit. My thought when I first got elected was go back ten years on it. Of course, the longer you go back, the further you go back, the more it's going to cost you. But still, I think we owe it to ourselves and to set the public free and let them know if there anything missing, it would be found in a forensic audit. And we'll be on, all of us will be on the same page, okay? I have no problem with Doge coming in and doing their thing, but it's mostly operations just like a financial audit. The audit they're talking about, we keep later, those are just operational audits. And let me set the record straight. I got elected in twenty-twenty. Those audits was being late, started being late in twenty-eighteen. I know the record out this end, it started in twenty-twenty. One of the reasons that we, it took so long to get up the snuff is because we didn't even have a city manager in twenty-twenty-one. We didn't hire a city manager in twenty-twenty, November twenty-twenty-one. At that point, of course, it never even brought to my attention about the audit. I knew nothing about audits at that time, okay? Of course, we went back, and we had trouble with finance. That's why Mr. Scott is our now financial director. We had to work through these issues as well, okay? And that's why I'm so grateful for Mr. Scott back there, because he came in, stepped in. When we gave him the position, he stepped in, and he, he did a fantastic job of getting it all up to date. So I have no problem with the audit. So if that's what you all want to do, that's fine, but I still suggest that we do a forensic audit, if you want to find out if anything's being just moved in. Okay?
Well, to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, my concern is more with the processes and the operations, because I, I do have the comfort that we have the audits done, that Mr. Borer is doing a good job. I wouldn't be more than happy to entertain a forensic audit. I think that sounds wonderful, and I would be happy to explore that. And perhaps that's something when budget cycle runs or comes around, we, we should do. I would support that. I think that would be great. Mr. Van Wagner, if I had to choose between getting the GFOA certification or getting the Government Efficiency Audit, I would choose the GFOA certification. So is there a way with the timelines of the two that we could still take advantage of the state resources without sacrificing a potential GFOA certification?
I think we can. And the way this process would work, we were told from Tallahassee's offices, we would have to have a resolution that they'll help us to have what they need, and then I would bring it back to the council and you would vote on it. But this was just to start a discussion, to get a consensus if there was one or not. And if there's so, then Mr. Mathis and I will proceed forward and work on a resolution to present before you.
Okay.
Are my priorities in line with the rest of the councils, that we want the GFOA certification?
Yeah. Let me, before, before a motion, let me, Mr. Waugh, what, what is your opinion on this?
Well, my opinion is that the city only has an interest in transparency, the correct numbers. So to the extent that you decide you want any audit, whether it's a Doge audit, a forensic audit, I think the city always has an interest in doing that and ensuring that to the public, you know, and the city does not have an interest in hidden things. The city does not have an interest, actually, another example is sometimes there's ethics complaints made against members of city councils, and, and a lot of times, cities will have the city attorney defend those members unless there's a finding in the end that there was wrongdoing, in which case then the funds have to be reimbursed to the city. The only reason I bring that up is for comparison. City doesn't have an interest in defending bad behavior. So just so, I think you, and encourage you even, to take the steps necessary to fulfill the public interest on this.
I move to approve item number sixteen, for the city to participate in the Florida Department of Government Efficiency Audit Program, and for staff to bring us back a resolution that allows that program to be participated in without sacrificing the deadlines for a GFOA certification, should we be able to achieve one.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second for approval, item number sixteen, to participate in the Florida Department of Government Efficiency Audit Program. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair vote aye as well. Motion passes five oh. So Mr. Van Wagner, if you are prepared, a resolution or whatever.
Yes, sir. I will have that at the next council meeting.
Item number seventeen is a contract renewal for the interim city manager.
I was asked to be in this role for ninety days with another ninety days, and that contract is almost up in June, so I've been here five months, and so it's time for the council to say what you'd like to do. So that's why I put this on the item, on the agenda, so you can tell me and the staff how you'd like us to proceed forward.
Okay, this is, that's the presentation? That's it?
Are there any changes to the contract terms?
Does any, this is a public, can anybody in the public wish to address this item, may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes.
Joe Famasi, twenty-six ninety-three, Jumping Jack Way. I come specifically to speak about this event. I mentioned about transparency and money owed to the city. This man sitting right over here in this chair, he would never tell you, he never tout his own horn, because he's humble and he knows, he knows how to do his job, but he's not going to brag about it. He found two-point-one million dollars owed to the city of Claremont from a developer, from a deal that was made in twenty-twenty-two. He's not going to tell you about that, but I will. Him, working collaboratively with the fire chief, were able to secure a fire property out in the Wellness Way area for a discount. It's never happened, as far as I know, from any other city manager. So he's working for the taxpayers, he's finding money that is owed to the city that nobody else could find. So I think he's doing an outstanding job. I might not always agree with you, Ms. Myers, but you know what? I know, I might be a critic, but I know how to put my stuff, that aside and recognize the good that you try to do for the city. I'm asking that you do the same for this man. I just would think that the city should thank you for your service and your humbleness. So I hope you will consider to extend this contract and see the good that he's done. There's more, but I don't have enough time to list it. So please, give him a fair shake. Please confirm him. Thank you.
Anyone else? This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to address this item, may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes.
Hello, Joe Zagami, Joe Zagami Jr., two-thirty Mohawk Road in Claremont. I mentioned that I'm a, I own and manage a portfolio of commercial real estate, and I've been doing business in Claremont a long time. I go back to Hal Turville and Wayne Saunders. and I've been doing business in Claremont a long time. Um, I go back to Hale Turville and Wayne Saunders, and I've seen councils come and I've seen councils go, uh, and, and, uh, I've seen effective councils, I've seen ineffective councils. And I've worked with just about every, uh, division in this city. Development Services, Building Services, Permitting, Fire Department, Utilities, all of it. And I've been very frustrated because, um, there, it has not been an attitude of public service by and large over the years here in Claremont. And, um, I think the staff and historically some of the council has forgotten who they work for. You work for us. And, um, I stayed away from Claremont for, for some time. I, my business, uh, new projects took me elsewhere, but I recently purchased the Mulberry Inn property and I'm going to be relocating my primary offices there. So you'll see that in front of you in the, in the weeks and months ahead. But I just want to say that I support Rick. He has my full support. And since Rick has been here, I have seen a shift. I've seen staff that has been more accommodating, more considerate, more helpful. Um, I've seen a, a staff whose default answer isn't necessarily no, but instead a staff that is willing to find a way to make things work within the code. And that's all that customers like me want. We just want cooperation and we want to find a way to make it work. And we want a staff that respects timeliness. Um, process is good, but so is action. And, uh, if you're a business person like I am, things need to move along and, um, not get mired. And, um, I think Rick is changing the culture here. I think, uh, Rick has a very sharp business mind. I think he's very good for this city, and I felt compelled to come up here and share that opinion with you. Um, I not only hope that you'll renew his contract, but when you have something so good that's homegrown, why would you go to the ends of the earth to find something else? Uh, as a employer, I, I know that I always choose to hire from within. So, uh, Rick has my support and, uh, I hope that he'll have your support too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Paula Hoyzington, five sixty-four East to Soder Street. Um, our interim city manager is the commended for the things that have been pointed out that he has done, um, since he's been in office. Again, nothing against our interim city manager. I just ask that you look at the contract. If there needs to be adjustments to the contract, since he has been in the position, you said five months, five months, he may see things in the contract that need to be removed or added, that you don't just automatically renew the contract, but make sure that it is the best contract. So all of the great things that the folks that have come up here and supported him, I'm not against him. Again, I'm about process to make sure we're doing what's right for the right reasons. If the contract is appropriate and you vote to renew it for another ninety days, sixty days, whatever, then fine. But if you haven't renewed, if you haven't reviewed the contract from the initial contract to ensure that the things that you need him to do, to ensure that the city continues to move smoothly, I just ask that you do that. And that's only fair to him, that he has a great contract, that he knows exactly what the expectations are, and that he knows what's expected of him from you, and that if he doesn't meet those expectations, what actions will be taken. That's all I ask.
Thank you.
Danny Page, Tuscan Yards subdivision. I know, Mr. Murray, this is probably killing you inside to hear some of these good comments about your interim city manager over here. With that being said, sir, um, I, I'd like to ask Mr. Waugh a question, if I may, sir. Um, so what is the, lack of the term, rules, uh, for engaging, um, for your own, I guess I could just say political, um, reasons during a mayor's luncheon to, uh, talk badly about your city manager to citizens that are attending that? I'm sure Mr. Murray remembers what he said, uh, that he doesn't feel this gentleman over here is qualified and he's very upset that he's making a big paycheck, which P.S., by the way, Murray, he's making less than, uh, Bolteis made, so whatever. But he's having a problem with him, uh, first of all, he says he's not qualified, he doesn't have the right uh, qualifications, which obviously he does if he's doing so well currently, um, in his position. But he's having a problem with him earning two paychecks, one from the city and one from a church. Um, with that being said, Mr. Murray, I guess, um,
Mr. Page, would you, would you, would you address Mr. Van Wagner?
Um, I can address who I want. You're taking my time. Could you stop my time, Tracy? Okay, you're interrupting me, sir. That's inappropriate. I want time back. Could I have thirty seconds back, please, Nicole, please? I think in the beginning, sir, you said to address the council. You're part of this council. So don't tell me what to do. This is my freedom of speech. This is my time, not yours, sir. Again, Mr. Robfor has rudely interrupted. Is that appropriate during a mayor's luncheon for him to speak ill of the, uh, city manager saying he's A, not qualified, and B, he takes issue with him receiving two paychecks? Again, before I was rudely interrupted, that's like Mr. Howard up here not being able to be a councilman because he has a full-time job. Actually, he has his own company making another check besides the small nominal check that he gets here for his, uh, stipend. But anyway, um, i- is that appropriate for a council member or a mayor to be discussing that at a luncheon, um, speaking incredibly egregiously about the interim city manager, sir?
Well, Ms. Page, just so you know, I, I normally take direction from them, so if they want me to answer that, I will. Um, I don't normally do it if just members.
Okay, well, could we take a vote up here because it's?
Ms. Ms. Waugh, you, you, you can answer that anywhere.
I just have a question. I mean, it might be appropriate, but I don't know. I'm asking.
The answer, assuming everything you said is, is accurate, I think that members of the city council, including the mayor, are able to express their opinions on staff or how things are running in the city. I think that also satisfies their First Amendment rights.
Sure.
Um, and ultimately, it's up to the city council to determine among themselves if anything like a resolution's been violated on that.
Okay, okay. I guess it's, it's just like my own personal opinion and people that have reached out to me since the luncheon that they just find it inappropriate, whether it's completely fine, but, okay, thank you. And by the way, um, he is doing a good job.
Thank you.
Patrick Bianchi, uh, eight-one-zero West Montrose Street. I brought a lot of notes here for this. I don't know what the intent of the extension of the agreement is. I assume that you, uh, will discuss that, uh, after a public comment. But what I will say is the initial hiring of Mr. Van Wagner, I'm going to use the term purpose, it took a lot of faith to do that. I don't think you were sure. Ultimately, your knowledge of him and the business community is such that he operates three large enterprises. And so therefore, based on maybe what budgets he works with in the private sector can easily translate to here. Well, in the last contractual timeline, we've taken that faith and, and what I can tell you and what I've seen over the past few months is that this man has changed the culture of this staff, of the processes in which me as a developer, as a real estate person, does business with the city, to Mr. Zagami's standpoint. And, and look, I, I'm a downtown developer, right? So there's, there's a lot, it's a lot different than maybe outside of downtown. But what a degree can't teach you is transparency, is how to communicate effectively and bring government and the community together and have access. I mean, a degree can't teach you that. There's plenty of billionaires that don't have degrees. I'm not going to hang my hat on getting the masters of public administration there with twenty-five years government experience, but he can't talk to somebody or he doesn't have a social element that is needed to run a functioning city. So, a- and again, I brought so much in, I can say it. This man has brought transparency. He has brought access. Um, I, I do not get special treatment from this man, but he simply opens the door and says, if there is a way we can get to yes, it is not a no at the door. And I've been faced with many noes before to then come out after years of fighting for the yes that we could have done in the onset of our conversation. This man has done that. I don't know what your plans are with him, but what I'm saying is whether you keep him in that chair or you hire somebody different, whoever you put in that chair has to be just like Mr. Van Wagner. He's exceptional and he actually makes this business community happy to do business here. And you can survey and you will find that we're, we're, we're very satisfied with what Mr. Van Wagner has done and what hopefully he will be continuing to do, or if you replace him, keep him as a consultant because y- you need him around. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? This is a public comment, uh, is public coming. Anyone in the public wish to address this item, may come to the microphone and state your name and address in half three minutes. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I close public comment. Bring it back to council. Let's say council.
I'm going to have a question for Mr. Waugh. This sort of ties into comments that I would also make in the next item. Am I okay to do that or do I really need to toe a fine line? Okay, I'm good. All right, so for me, you know, when I suggested Rick, you know, I've known him for a lot of years, and I thought we would be in good hands, and it has turned out that we are. I support him remaining for as long as we need to. The fact of the matter is that we have another RFP coming up here in a few minutes. And Rick has been able to poach another high flyer from another city, which is what I've said all along since the exodus of our past city manager. And I'm not in a hurry. I think we're in a great position to figure out what we want to do and be very precise about what we do and how we transition from here to there. We know that Mr. Van Wagner is not a lifelong city employee. He's not looking to retire from the city. He is here in the interim. I think that with us having Dan Mathis here, he ticks all of my boxes, and this is going to go into the next item. I've watched the last eight city manager searches in Florida, and I'd pick him as my number one and just about all of them. And the past city manager one that was down up in Fort Walton Beach was my number one pick for this RFP, and he still is outshining even all of those candidates. So for me, I'd like to see Rick stay, um, whether it's another, whether we do it as the exact same contract with renewals. Um, but I think that we have the opportunity with Dan and with Rick to make a transition to a city manager who has the skills, knowledge, education, along with somebody who has the business skills, knowledge and education. And I don't care which one's one and two, we just need to get from point A to point B. And so I will support Rick on a continual basis. And I will tell you now that I will support Dan to become our, I will vote for Dan to be our city manager today, although we can't do it. Um, but I do support him in becoming that city manager and Dan being able to use Rick's skills and however he sees best.
I mean, I want to reiterate what everybody's saying. I mean, I've known Mr. Van Wagner a long time. Let's not get personal, let's say Rick. I, and I think he's doing a phenomenal job, not only in himself, but I see that in the staff, the way the staff is. Initially, everybody was afraid it was going to be a splintering, but it didn't come about. As a matter of fact, it came the other way. I think there's a lot more respect now for the staff within themselves and with Rick and the way he deals with the people. So, you know, I'm, I, I mean, I don't want to go into the next, the next agenda item yet, but I would, I would be the first to say, why don't we just renew the contract for ninety days with an automatic ninety-day renewal?
I, if I can, just briefly, for the members of the public, because I know everyone up here feels what I'm about to say. It is extraordinarily uncomfortable to talk about another person's employment in front of an audience of people. It's, I mean, it is out of respect for the person you're talking about. Um, so, Mr. Van Wagner, if I say something that is factually inaccurate, please correct me. Interrupt me to correct. Obviously, I've had conversation with Mr. Van Wagner coming into this meeting and, and what he's doing. And it is my clear understanding, he is not a permanent seat at the end of this dais. So much as he's doing a phenomenal job, and how do I measure that? I measure it by the fire efforts that we've made with the training facility and fire station two, the efforts to add additional fire stations, ambulatory care, the police contract, that was one of the easiest union contracts negotiations we've ever done. Um, the target of being the safest city in Florida. We've got public, uh, parks and rec conversations going on. There's budgeting conversations going on. I mean, the, the moving forward with openness and collaboration is, is second to none, in my opinion. So unless Mr. Van Wagner said to me he was ready to be permanent, a renewal of ninety plus ninety to me is a no-brainer. Um, I would like to send him on his merry way back to the life he lived before he stood up at two o'clock in the morning and accept the craziest appointment ever. Um, I really would. I really mean that. I appreciate what he's done and I don't want to take advantage of that. In looking at the RFPs, they are looking at a, um, three-to-four-month process. Five, by the time we pick them, we hire, potentially six, by the time someone transitions. So I think that ninety plus ninety is the right time for us to comply with what we need to do on the next item on our agenda. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve item number seventeen, which for those in the audience who maybe haven't reviewed it, it's a renewal of the existing contract with a ninety plus ninety.
I second it.
Okay, I have a motion in a second for, uh, well, item number seventeen, renewing interim city manager contract before I call for the vote. Uh, let me say this. I think, uh, the public tend to forget, yeah, we are elected officials, but we, we are also still residents and we entitled to our opinion. Uh, yes, I host my mayor's luncheon, and please, please understand this. I don't care who you are. If you ask me my opinion, I'm going to tell you how I feel and the truth of how I feel. I'm not going to hide my feelings. I don't care who you are. I don't lie. I'm not a liar, okay? I'm going to tell you and be honest with you upfront. Now, if you can't handle the truth, that's your problem, okay? Mr., yes, at my luncheon, I was asked about Mr. Van Wagner, and I, I made the same comments when they, they made the motion to, to, uh, hiring, I mean, put him in here, in a manager, city manager. He's not qualified about that. He's never did city managers work, okay? Where most city managers have went to school, they have trained for these things for years and years and years, okay? And to take someone and just put them in the position, I felt like that was wrong. That isn't what we needed. We could have did some other, took other steps to do. I've been knowing Mr. Van Wagner for what, twenty years or so more. We've worked together on several different projects. So, but because I know him and everything, that doesn't mean I have to hold back my feelings and say, hey, he's not qualified. I'm going to just put him there. I'm going to be honest and be truthful because I was elected by the people to, uh, take care of the city for your concern, and that was my concern. He wasn't qualified. We talk about the pay he get, yes, okay, he, he make four thousand dollar less than the, than a city, our previous city manager. So if you want to say he making less, four thousand dollar less from a man that had been, been in doing this job for over thirty-five years. We getting still, we've turned around and we put a person in that never done it and making only four thousand dollar less. So that was a concern. Are we taking care of our city, uh, our residence, um, funds and everything in there? I have no problem with renewing Mr. Mr. Van Wagner contract at this point, okay? Uh, because as I think I go back and said, I knew it was going to probably take almost a year. I've been through this process before. And it took us so, almost a year to get a new city manager hired, going through the same process. So I knew ninety days wasn't going to be enough. And at this point, hey, we, I feel like we have no other choice but to renew his, his contract and continue. Now, if it's anything in his contract he need, need to change, he looking to change, he need to let us know, okay? he need to let us know, okay? I wasn't happy, I let it be known at the time we did it, I wasn't happy with the money we were paying him because I'm sorry, uh, you don't just walk into a decision like that and get, get that kind of money, I'm sorry, uh, with no, no experience and everything. So, but with that being said, if nobody else has anything to say, I'll go ahead and call for a vote.
I, I just wanna correct what you said because the all-in cost, Rick, is substantially less. Um, the past city manager was making somewhere in the neighborhood of $263,857 a year and, um, Rick, what are you making? I'm sorry, I just wanna be sure that I'm getting the...
It's a hun, it's 192,000.
Yeah, so...
Plus a $450 car.
Mr. Mayor, I had this poll today because I've heard you say that and it's not true because what you're not adding in is all of his benefits. Rick gets zero benefits through this and so the past city manager was making, um, over $60,000 more than our current city manager. So I just wanted to correct that on record.
And, and if I could just add a couple of things, Mr. Mayor, if you'd indulge me.
Yes.
I, I chose not to take those benefits.
Mm-hmm.
I, I made that choice. I, I did that freely and willingly and I would continue if you want me to do that. And I would just humbly make a request. Could we just work together for the next six months if I'm here, Mr. Mayor and everybody on the council? I, I wanna be a bridge to all the council. I don't wanna serve just one person. I wanna serve all five of you. I wanna make Claremont better. I mean that with all of my heart and, Mr. Mayor, I do have more, I have a lot of years with you and I would hope that would be an advantage for us to work together. So with all sincerity and humility, I'm asking that we would stop starting today on this, on this, I, I'm not, I, I don't have an interest in having personal attacks against me by my council members. If the audience wants to say anything, that's their prerogative, but I would ask that if something was gonna be said, couldn't we do that respectfully and private with each other? Unless it's something that I'm egregious and it needs to be addressed publicly, I would suggest that love covers a multitude of sins. And if I have done something that's egregious and I'm not listening, then ring me out. But if I'm listening and I'm trying for the betterment of our city so we can all get along and work together, can we have a spirit of unity? 'Cause I want our, people are watching Claremont.
Yes, they are.
They watch these broadcasts, they watch these comments and I want all of Florida to know, I care about every one of you, I wanna work with you, I love this staff, they're amazing. You've got a great staff here, sir, and all the rest of the council members. They deserve system stability and it, it just makes things very uneasy when there's back and forth going on and I don't mean that corrective, I mean that very, just humble with all sincerity, 'cause i-if I'm gonna do this for the short period of time that's left, it would be so much funner if we could do it together. And that, thank you for letting me share that with you and I would be willing to do this.
Mr. Van Wagner, I totally, I totally agree with you and if, uh, I've been trying to work with you ever since you got here. But I still, I still, uh, when I don't think you're doing certain things, I do try to bring that to your attention and yes, I've seen things up here on the dais at, at times because, um, I may bother to tell your attention in private, but it still happen out here, okay? Uh, I don't think it's been a time where you, you haven't called me and asked me something or tried to do something with me that where I, I, I tried to fight you on it or anything. I just look out for the better of the city and I, I know we have to work together regardless for the betterment of the city and that's all I've been trying to do with you, okay? Um, I wish I had to, we didn't have a sunshine law where I can even work and call some of the council members and work a little bit closer with them where they think I, I, but due to sunshine law, we just, that calls us to pull together.
Yeah, ditto.
I'm here for the people and we all here together and as I always say, I'm only one vote up here and I'm gonna go with whatever the, the people decide whether I like it or not, okay? But I do, I represent a lot of people out there that calls me and everything and I, I'm totally in agreement with you. We have one of the best staffs, uh, around.
We do.
I mean, they always have been. We've always had a great staff here and they continue to do amazing things. As a matter of fact, in my report, I got a letter I wanted to read that was sent to me, uh, about services and everything. But with that being said, if nobody else have any comments, uh, anything further, I have a motion in a second, go ahead and approve another 90 days, 90 days extension, uh, interim city manager contract. As I said, anything in the contract need to be changed?
Not, not on my end, I'm fine with all the same things.
Okay. With that being said, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And chair vote aye as well. Item number 18, evaluation of our RFP for the executive recruitment services for city manager.
Oh. All right. Take all difficulties. Community, uh, city council, my name is Freddie Suarez, procurement director. I'm here to share with you the results of the RFP scores. All right. So those are the results of the overall, um, I believe. Colin Missigan Associates have received the highest, uh, scoring out of, of the vendors, uh, followed by Baker, Willie, Tilly and, and what, what was it? With Creek, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Your, uh, after the scores, normally you could, the options, you have so options to choose. Option one would be just to, uh, accept the scores as is with the number one, uh, company in Collins and negotiate a contract with them because ask them to come in and, and do a Q and A with them or do a presentation in front of the council and then afterwards negotiate a contract. Or option two would be to show list, two, three, maybe four, however the city council decides to bring in and then have them do presentations and Q and A afterwards from each one of them. If you decide to do option two, then they, but the scores from this, from this, um, RFP go, go away. You start with a blank, they all start with a blank, uh, slate, uh, and you will just rank on one through three, four, however many vendors we have in presenting. Uh, after that time, then you negotiate a contract with the number one ranked firm and move them forward with the, with the award. Or option three, you can say, uh, you wanna throw out the, the scores and decline the RFP process and do something else, so.
Freddie, can I ask you something?
Sure.
Like on the different evaluating, you get like, uh, like evaluating one, you get like five, five of them highlighted and of course, number two, you only have two highlighted. Why?
It's just a system that does that for, for, um, for me, the, I use OpenGov and it tabulates the whole process for me. As you can see, next to the numbers are, is a practices number one or number five and so forth. Those are the evaluators who picked that company as the highest, uh, score the highest, it's in that order, but the colors or percentages, um, I guess...
Well, I, I guess another, my other thing is, uh, like, uh, what's that? Hotep? I guess, I can't hardly read it. It's the last one there with a rating of 43, but yet and still you have other ones that's rated higher, but it's highlighted. So what's the, I guess I'm trying to figure out the system of the highlights, I guess.
Yeah. I don't, I can't, I don't know what answer for that.
And, and I see the same thing, evaluator four, you know? Uh, you got some highlight, like highlighted at 37, but you got some higher scores up there, so.
Mr. Mayor, and Freddie, please tell me if I'm wrong. It looks to me like the highlights are either the number one and two, perhaps over a certain score of maybe 80, and then the secondary highlights, which probably should be in red if I was picking one, are those below 50. Those seem to be the numbers that jump out at me as what those highlights might mean. I, I share your questions on the highlights.
That's correct.
Yeah. Looks at the yellows, the score the least.
Okay. So they shouldn't have been, probably, as Ms. Strange say, it probably should've been a different color.
Yeah, maybe red. Red.
Well, I mean, I, I was figuring to highlight it like especially off the top of the, of course, the 82 was the, uh, top score here, which is, okay.
Of course, I've been known to highlight a spreadsheet or two, color, color coded, so that's...
Yeah, I do intemper with the spreadsheets, completely, exactly from the software into , uh, Word documents.
Okay.
Green means, green means special.
Green means special?
Yeah, maybe they're green and yellow and we just can't see it on the printout.
So, okay, anything, uh, one of them, other ones, uh, anyone thing that was below, uh, below 50, okay? I got that.
Yep.
All righty, but you, uh, do you have, did you have the option written out? So I can look at them again. Okay. I just wanted to read them right quick. This is a public hand, anyone in the public wish, uh, comment on this process may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes.
Thank you, Brian Bain, 245 Nautica Mile Drive. I recommend that you pursue option number one. Um, it's been four months since the RFP went out, um, and, uh, the, the area, was it Basinger and Associates? Three of you selected them as their, as your number one. Uh, they were the only one to not have a score below 60 and they were the highest score by, I think, seven and a half points. Um, and so that to me kind of looks at, um, you all thought that they rose to the top, for three of you, the top, uh, but to the top tier, uh, or tiers for the rest. Also, i-in doing some research on them, several of our neighboring communities, Mascot, Groveland, Mount Verde, have utilized this same agency to conduct city manager searches in the past. My recommendation is to have the city negotiate the contract and then once finalized, meet and discuss and set expectations, um, what you want from them, what you want of candidates, your role, the role of the citizens, and set a relatively firm ti-timeline. The nice part about this company's website is they have a list of, uh, folks that they've hired in the past and you can see when the RFP process went out and when they were placed and it was about a three to four month window. So council member Strange is right on that. I think that three to, three to four month window and, and timeframe is, is probably right on that. So I encourage you to learn from others disasters, other cities disasters. Be clear and honest and transparent and engage your citizens on this process, uh, making sure that we find and hire a full-time city manager with city manager experience and expertise. Um, the city and the citizens really deserve nothing less, so I hope you'll move forward tonight, uh, considering that this has been four months and that has nothing to do with our procurement department. Quite honestly, that falls squarely on you all as the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny Page, Tuscan Ridge. Um, I, I'm just gonna, what Mr. Howard said earlier, um, back up. Normally I'm for, I like to call, lack of a better term, farming things out for other people to come in and, you know, give us, some folks from, um, outside of Claremont or whatever for a position. Uh, but I too have been following other municipalities here in the state of Florida and their hiring processes, the firms that they have used. I've watched their city council meetings when they are discussing those candidates and, and so forth and, and ironically, and just for fun, uh, to kinda put out there into perspective what the crap that they are handing these, uh, uh, council. For instance, uh, Baltice was in a, a lot of those, uh, and, and if, and if that's the best that tho-these firms can, can, uh, do, then, then we're in trouble because I, I have to laugh and say, gee, would he end up back over here on our, on, uh, for, for a firm to tell us, hey, you should use this guy? Uh, Palm Coast stood out to me, um, the city of Palm Coast, uh, having a real hard time. They even fired the firm who, uh, ironically was the same firm that we used when, uh, Baltice was hired. They, they, uh, they fired him, uh, recently, I think it's called S and G, Doug was the, uh, representative then, uh, well, still now. Um, they're just having a really bad, bad time of it and, and not just Palm Coast, but, um, which, I think you said Fort Walton Beach or, and there were some other ones. And, and, and again, I, I'm a big proponent of, of, of hiring from the outside too, but I, I have to, I have to, uh, go here with Mr. Howard, um, and on his point of view of this. Dan would, it'd be easier and quicker and for, uh, Marie and all your little folks that follow you would just love it if, if the interim over here could get out as soon as possible. So it would probably be a better bet just to go ahead and slide Dan in there, uh, less money we're spending, 'cause I don't know how much it costs, like 25, $30,000 to hire this firm. And then you gotta fly in all these folks that you determine, like the top three, their families or whatever, put them up and it would just, it would be, uh, more convenient, uh, less money. And again, I've, I've seen like Mr. Howard has the, these, these candidates that these other municipalities are getting and they are bottom of the barrel, especially if Baltice is in there. So, and again, this would be great for Maria, like I said, and his little fun fans, um, because, uh, Mr. Van Wagner over here could, could, uh, vacate a lot sooner if we just slid Dan in. So, and Dan is very professional. I, I sat during the candidate reviews and his interviews and all that, uh, several years ago when he was, I think, the top, he was in the top two. Very professional, very smart, very nice. Um, it, it's just, it's, it's a no-brainer really. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is a public hand, anyone in the public wish to address the side may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I close public comment. Bring it back to council. What say council?
So for me, my top pick was the top pick. Um, and they did just do one in Fort Walton Beach and I watched it closely and, um, it was interesting because I believe they must've been watching what we were doing, 'cause they followed a very similar process where they brought in a council member, a former council member to be their interim city manager. They worked through the process. It took them about four months to get through the process and, you know, I keep hearing that we wanna hire somebody who has city management experience. They didn't hire somebody with city management experience. They hired somebody out of South Florida who had managed about $700 million department, but they had not managed the city. And let's remember that when Scott Davidoff was promoted, he did not have city management experience and did not have the degrees to back it up. At the end of the day, I said when we started this process that I'd like to poach somebody. I wanted to find somebody who wasn't looking for a job and that person is Dan and he's lived here. He lives in, not quite in the city limits, but he has horses, so, um, but at the end of the day, I like his management style. Um, I believe it coincides with what Rick has done. I think it also feeds into the culture that we see changing within the city, where we're gonna allow our directors to fly, where we're going to allow our staff to do their job instead of having what we've had over the past, which is heavy-handed manager. And I think we have wonderful staff who need the ability to go out and show us what they can do. And for me, I don't wanna pursue an FRP. I mean, at the end of the day, the company I picked is number one, so yay, but I've already seen what they're gonna bring to the table and it just, for me, makes zero sense to do that when we have somebody who we were able to bring on, who's already here, who's familiar with the community, I, it just makes zero sense to go down this path and to waste $50,000 when I firmly believe we have our answer sitting in the number two spot. Thank you.
Mr. Suarez, will you put the results up rather than the options? Ms. Myers, do you wish to speak or do you want?
Uh, yes. Thank you. Um, I agree with what, um, Mr. Howard said in regards of having Dan. Um, Dan is professional, Dan has the expertise and, but more importantly, he has the heart. Um, Mr. Wa... Mr. Van Wagner has shifted the culture here, and one way I can tell you that, I can see that was with our fire department, for example. Our fire department found two hundred thousand dollars to save the city, and they even made a model to show us. Now, if you are inspired, you're able to do that, but when you feel stressed, you're oppressed, you're treading water, you're not being creative, you're only doing just your job. And I'm sure some of you all have been in those positions where you've had jobs where it was stressful, so how creative are you going to be when you are under stress and you're concerned if you're going to keep your job or not? Mr. Van Wagner has brought a breath of fresh air to the employees from what I have seen on their interactions and the things that they have shared with me, and so I would like that to continue, and Mr. Dan shows that he will continue that. One of the things that he said that really stood out to me is when I asked him, if you had to fire anybody, are you comfortable doing that? And he said to me, I am, however, I would help them find another job. I have never heard any employer ever saying that. That really said something to me as the character he has as a person, and character matters. And as has been said before, you can have all the degrees in the world, but if you don't know how to communicate and motivate and inspire people, what good is it? You know, and sometimes you do need someone who isn't in the industry, so to speak, to come in with fresh eyes and see how we can improve things, and that's what Mr. Van Wagner has done. And Dan is similar, I believe, in the things that he would do for our city. So I think it would behoove us to allow him to be the city manager, to save us money, and to give him time as he's sitting here to make sure this is who we want before we give him that position. That's saving money and time, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you sufficiently uncomfortable yet? On the last agenda item, I said, this is, it's very awkward to sit up here and talk about people, and now we're talking about Mr. Mathis. He's not even on the agenda, and here we go. I think Mr. Mathis is wonderful. I think he brings something to the city that is very valuable, that we need from an urban design standpoint, and from a staff interaction, his commitment to the city, he ran for, you know, he applied for this position how many years ago, and I think he's great. And just as I said to Mr. Van Wagner, if I say something that you feel compelled to interrupt me in this extraordinarily awkward setting, please do that. Just raise your hand and say it's changed. Again, in my conversations with Mr. Mathis, understanding that a conversation like this has to happen in a public setting, I do not feel that if we asked him to take the job today, that he is ready and willing to do so. Now, he may be able, we might see something in him that he's not quite there, and I say this with care in my heart, I truly do. It's not a criticism, it's an observation. And I think that we put this process in place for the public, and there's a sense of accountability for me in doing that. So I want to share with you in my minute and a half, and I may ask for more time, so let me know if that's okay when we get there. I want you to see what I did, because I'm evaluator number five, and my numbers are very different than a lot of your numbers. So what I did was, I looked at all of the applicants, and I looked at the items on the scale that were unique to the applicants. So when we look at thirty percent of the evaluation, it actually has to do with the experience of the firm and the personnel in the firm. The rest of this is about their ability to fill out RFPs and, you know, run an office on a methodology that everyone else in the entire country follows. So I identified the areas that I thought were actually potentially unique to the firm, and unless somebody really jumped out, I scaled all the other ones the same for everybody. So, and they were at acceptable. There was a number in there, six or seven, whatever it was, it's acceptable. Then what I did was, I looked at the firms and looked where they were from, and I looked at the leadership, and I actually called people that I know in different parts of the state and the country who might be connected to some of these firms or have had experience with some of these firms. My intention in doing this was actually to find somebody who's not going to bring us a typical government employee. My intention, because we have a Dan Mathis here, is to find somebody that will inspire this council, the citizens, Mr. Mathis, the entire staff, by bringing something wholly unique to the table. Mr. Mayor, may I have one more minute?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Van Wagner did that, and we've seen the results of that. And I said in December that I was concerned with going after, for a city manager, someone that we're insisting on having government experience, and I continue to have that concern, and I'm hearing it echoed by Mr. Howard. So the firms that I have ranked the highest are actually firms that have connections in industry, international, sports. Baker Tilly actually works with sports NCAA schools around the country. I think they've represented thirty different firms. Sunshine Enterprises is international, they have connections in Dubai and industry, and, I mean, they've, they're across the, across the world. And the lead individual at HR, consult HR, her background is in gaming, in e-gaming. These are people that are going to bring something different to the table. So if we're going to go after the firm that's the best of the average, that's going to bring us more people with government experience, then I completely agree, Mr. Howard, Ms. Myers, that person's sitting right there. I agree with you, if he would apply. And I don't know if he would apply. I don't think he'd apply in this process, from our conversations, but that doesn't mean, but, but I do think we have the best technician from a government standpoint that we're going to find. He's been through it at this, in this city, and I think he's proven that. But I think we owe it to our staff and our citizens to maybe do a search for someone inspirational, and if that search ends up being an economic development director, or it ends up being a deputy city manager, or it ends up being a city manager, I think that will come out in the wash, and, and we figure out, not getting hung up on titles as much as getting hung up on inspiration and what that person might bring to the table. Because if we found the right person to match Mr. Mathis' skills, this city would be in extraordinary hands. That's where I'm at.
Me? I believe Dan was number two in our, in our last search for city manager, like I think somebody, I think Mr. Howard had just said that. A process we spent considerable amount of money on. Since then, we stepped, he stepped into the role as our assistant city manager, where he's been doing, working hands-on with our staff, departments, and day-to-day operations. He's not just familiar with our challenges, he's actively managing them. It would be physically irresponsible, I think, for us to, to do an extensive search and spend fifty thousand dollars while we have a qualified, tested leader right here in our midst. Dan knows the community, he knows the council, and he, I think he's earned the trust of our staff, and I believe we owe it to the residents to consider promoting Within, saving time, taxpayer dollars, and preventing the, and preserving the continuity of our city. I think he's a proven candidate, and I would make the motion that we, we might be able to use one of these firms for future use, maybe keeping him on retainer, so that we can use him for other people that we might need to hire in, in the city.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're all correct. Mr. Matthews was one of our top finalists. I sat on his dais and interviewed Mr. Matthews, I was one of those that interviewed him during the last search, and to be honest with you, he would, he was my second choice. And I somewhat agree with, I agree with you, Ms. Strange, that we need somebody to motivate the people. I know we got a great staff and everything, but I still know there's some tensions and one of the, that was one of my main concerns when we was out looking for candidates, city manager, last time. The morale in the city was not, not so great, okay? I was even scared to come up and talk to someone, because it was just terrible, and that's one of the things I, I think the main reason I hired Mr. Boltis, he did come in, he changed the morale of this, of this department. And I, I got that from people throughout, they loved him and everything, and that was the main thing. I was looking for somebody that could motivate the people and everything, because the staff was, I mean, they was, they was in a bad place, okay? As I said, Mr. Matthews would, would have been my second choice, and if I had, if with Mr. Boltis and it worked out, that was going to be my suggestion that we hire him. However, it didn't work that way. Now, I think, I, I don't have no problem hiring Within, and I think we need to hire from Within, and if it was up to me right now, I would say, yes, let's hire Mr. Mathis, however. I feel like we do need to go out and do the search, and if he, if he's the top candidate, he's here, we'll go ahead and hire him again, okay? Can't say, and I'm not trying to pick on you, Mr. Howard, I can't say he wasn't looking for a job, because he came here, he was one of the candidates, so he had been looking for a job, okay? And I love him, I thought he was a great candidate, and I still think so, and this, like I said the other week, I would love, love to hire from Within, but it's been said many times, I'm hearing the people out there say, hey, let's go out and search, like, search for a new, new police chief, even though I'm, I'm ready to hire Mr. Grasic right now as police chief, okay? But if that's what the people want, to do the search, and we need to go out and do that, and I've heard it said here a couple times a day, we need to go out and, and give the system a chance and do the search. And that's where I stand, but as again, on one vote, whichever way you decide, I, I like Mr. Matthews, I know I've been through the process with him, I know where he stands, so I'm okay with that, with him. We, we've done the work to evaluate these companies, and I say, hey, let's move for, for me, I'm concerned, let's move forward through the number one. Search on the list and move forward.
I move to give each of us another minute and a half for further discussion.
So we actually have another round of three minutes. You get two rounds of three minutes.
First time I've used the rule, sorry. Great. Well...
Hold on, though, because I'd like to get you and I worked out on this.
This is where it's, this is called the fishbowl.
So this is where, I appreciate where Dan's at, and I understand that we need a leader, and I told him, don't be offended when I call him a technocrat, but I have no issue having a technocrat at the top.
You need a technocrat.
And we agree on this. We need a technocrat, we also need a business mind, and how one and two goes is maybe a difference of opinion, I don't know, but for me, if we're going to go looking at big picture, and we're going to start doing redevelopment, and we're going to do form-based codes, and we're going to do comp plans, and we're going to do these specific things, then the person at the top, I really want to be that technocrat, because they're going to have to walk this through for the next five, seven, ten years. I mean, this is not something that happens overnight. And so that's where I lead towards Dan being in the number one, and I wholeheartedly agree that there needs to be somebody in an economic development standpoint, because I've said this multiple times, for me, right now, the most important thing to Claremont is economic development, economic development, economic development. We need to continue that process, and I would love to have somebody there who has their boots on the ground, bringing in those companies. And as we expand our city limits and we start bringing in some of these industrial areas and start bringing in some of these other pieces, we need to be able to fill those spots. And just like downtown, which was tumbleweeds seven to ten years ago, it is now, it is not any longer. And so Claremont is going to continue to grow, but we need to have that purpose and that intention in bringing those on. And so my concern is that if we have somebody who is economic development leader, they're not going to lead that purpose and intention on the comp plan side, on the growth side, and I think that, for me, supersedes the economic development side from a standpoint of longevity, not from a standpoint of importance. So I hope that explains it, but I'm with you, but I'm not.
Well, I think what we don't have, I think we're in agreement, just perhaps what process best supports that.
May I interject on something? I just wanted to be out there for y'all to consider before we get too far down the road, but your city charter talks a little bit about this. In other words, how you select a city manager is not completely a free-for-all. And so, and, well, I mean, there's some cabining of discretion here. So in section thirty-one subsection D, it says, "The city manager shall be chosen by the council solely on the basis of his," this was written a few decades ago, "executive and administrative qualifications, with special reference to his actual experience in or knowledge of accepted practice in respect to the duties of this office as hereinafter set forth." And then it goes into section thirty-two, which is what that's referring to, and it says, "Chief executive and head of administrative branch of government, responsible for proper administration, appoint and remove officers and employees, prepare the budget annually, complete report on the finances, advise on the financial condition of the city, make recommendations, attend all meetings, perform such other duties as may be prescribed, appoint a purchasing agent, fix the salary of officers, manage and control city-owned public utilities." So that's what your city charter says. I just want you all to have that in mind as you imagine what you're looking for.
Yeah, I think we're looking for an executive, because we have, how many department heads, Mr. Van Wagner? Twelve department heads? You know, and, and I think they need to be the experts. There's a big presumption that Mr. Mathis would take this job if offered. I just want to point that out in this conversation. I'm not a hundred percent confident that he would if it was offered today, and he has not raised his hand to interrupt me yet. So in my business, I have made the mistake, and I'm cautious about ever making it again, whether it's my business or another business, of promoting somebody who either doesn't want to be promoted or is not ready to be promoted. And you can take a really great employee and lose them, because they have been moved into a position that they either did not want, or weren't ready for, or didn't fully understand the consequences of it. If we were to go with the first firm, I could tell you, I don't have a lot of confidence that's going to give us something different. I am affirmatively looking for somebody with, for example, it might be Fortune 500 C-suite, it might be someone who was an athletic director of a major university, it might be someone who ran a national governing body as the chief executive officer, it might be somebody who's connected in a space like that, maybe someone who, you know, Dubai came up earlier, you know, the chief contractor in Dubai. I mean, somebody who's going to bring something with several hundred employees, I'm not looking for someone to cut their teeth, I'm looking to potentially bring someone from a different industry, who has corporate executive experience, that again, would inspire our staff and our I think this is important, and if we could agree on the type of person we're looking for, I was actually excited that there were three firms that I thought brought a really unique Rolodex, to date myself a little bit, to the table, and I, I kind of felt like all the other ones were pretty much more of what you've been watching, Mr. Howard, on the recruitment side. And so I'm not as excited about those, but the three that are highlighted under evaluator five, I thought they really brought something different to the table, and I, for one, am willing to stand by a vote, a decision, to move forward with, really, any one of them would be interesting to me, to see who they find, and we might go through it and find out, we've already got the unicorn, and three months from now, he might say, you know what, I'm ready to do this. But at least we'd be moving that process forward. So that's how I feel about it. I don't want a situation where Mr. Mathis says, I'd love to be the city manager, and he thinks I'm upset with him or don't want him. I do think our city manager should be someone that is as close to a five-o vote as we can get, and I'm as close to a yes vote on him as I can be. I just think that it would be prudent for us to go through the process.
I mean, we, like, like I said previously, he was vetted already.
Oh, yeah.
He was vetted number two, so I don't, you know, I mean, if we want to spend another fifty thousand to get another five people over here that we can then vet again, and then we're going to be able to see his experience in six months, knowing that he would, he would be a phenomenal city manager, because I, my understanding is that within a period of time, that's what you want to do. Is that correct? I see a head shake and the affirmative. So, I mean, I don't know why we would spend this money now, because I don't know if that's going to really give us anything as far as city manager goes. I think maybe we can, I don't know if we're allowed to keep them on as, on a referral basis for future things, like, let's say we want to... for future things, like, let's say we wanna look some other type of department head that we might wanna look for. But I think when we look from within, I think that increases morale for all staff. I think they, they're gonna, you know, they're gonna feel like we care about them as opposed to, well, let's get somebody from, uh, you know, a, a top-five firm. You know, I mean, that, that might be a better person, but sometimes better isn't the best. And we might have the best right in front of us right now.
You're right. We could have the best right in front of us right now, but you don't know what else is out there.
We don't.
Until you go through the process. As I said, you know, he was my number two in the last process and, uh, um, but at this point, I, I still suggest that we go ahead out and, and go with the, from one of the firms, anyway, and go through the process as, as we, we said we would, and promised the people we would do. Let's go ahead and continue the process. We don't know what we're gonna get. Just like before, we didn't know what we were gonna get. I can't guarantee you either one of these companies listed here gonna bring you to top candidates. None of them can guarantee that. They can just submit it out there, um, and we see what we get. I didn't know what, uh, what we were gonna get in the last time when Mr. Mathis showed up here, you know, it was a surprise. I mean, I had to go through the process and learn and get to know him, and the interview process and everything else. Um, so, uh, and just like we did all the rest of them. And that's what the whole process give us, the opportunity to look and see. Um, you know, I'm just kinda confused. I'm really, really confused because I hear one minute we talking about we hiring from within, and the next minute, we, we don't wanna hire from within, so we need to make up our mind what we wanna do here, okay? Uh, one minute, you're great to hire within, but then the next minute, I'm hearing other people say, we need to go outside and look for the better, okay? I'm personally, like, I've always said, and Mr. Peters, I believe in hiring from within side because it increased morale and give, give your staff opportunity to say, hey, look, look, look forward to something to look forward to. So I have no problem hiring within. Uh, as I've said at last council meeting, I will constantly say that, I, I truly believe in hiring within. But this is the process that we said we were gonna go through. And I, I suggest that we just carry out the process, that the Matthews can, uh, submit his application. And if he's the best, as somebody, heard somebody else say before, he arrives to the top, okay?
I need to ask a question. Um, and I don't know if this is Freddie or Mr. Law. Um, if we were to approve, let's say, three of these groups, we don't actually hire for number two. That is city manager function. Right?
I don't know that I understand the question.
So for, so if we were to approve one of these, we don't actually hire, council does not hire for the deputy or the assistant city manager, correct? I already know that's correct. So we're not, we don't.
If you pick option number two that was presented to you as a procurement option.
If we just said, here's our three.
Right.
That would roll into the city manager, could we roll that into the city manager's option to run that through then to find their number two? In Allison's strain, in Allison's strain of, I'd like somebody who is economic development outside of government.
I, I don't know if I'm missing something else. Mr. Howard is, and I, I apologize.
No, 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 I'm not explaining it well, then.
I think he's asking if we select a firm to be a headhunter, is that then somebody that the city manager could use to find a new deputy, assuming Mr. Mathis was appointed to the executive position?
I mean, I, I'll defer to procurement on that.
Uh, yes, you could.
But he doesn't need that, right? He would just list the job if he wanted to hire a deputy and.
Basically, if I'm not mistaken, what will happen, we go ahead and hire, hire the firm and everything. And then, of course, we decide to move Mr. Matthews. If one of those candidates that come, that won't come, become one of the finalists, if we, we can turn around and offer him the deputy city manager. Yes, we can do that.
Yes, for sure.
No, no, so, not even remotely where I'm going.
I was there with the mayor.
I am, I am not, I'm not looking for another technocrat. We have a technocrat. I'm looking for the person that Allison is looking for. I'm looking for that economic development leader. We're not gonna hire that position number two because that's not in our purview. That would be in the city manager's purview to hire them. And if we were, if we were to approve th, this group, then they would be tied to this group that we pick out. If we said, okay, we wanna put these three at the top, then the city manager would be able to pick from that, to move that forward. It would then be taken away from our.
For the city, for the actual city manager?
For the city manager to look for their number two, because we're not hiring for number two.
I mean, this is not about the number two.
I understand that. I'm not gonna approve this for number one.
I see.
So I'm trying to find a way to provide Allison for her number two, but I'm certainly not going to vote for this as a number one.
Let me, let me interject, because you don't have to do that. If Mr. Mathis says he's ready to be the city manager, I trust that he and me and our circle of people and, and advertisement can find a strong executive, um, and economic development, um, branding person. I, I have no doubt in his ability. My hesitation with Mr. Mathis is, one, he hasn't applied for this job. And two, I don't know if he would accept it if offered today. And so if he's saying, yeah, should he talk? I don't even know how appropriate any of this is. I feel like this is the weirdest employment hiring situation I've ever been in, next to his appointment. Perhaps only second to that. What do we do in this situation? You guide us, please.
Well, I mean, I, I think the matter before you is whether or not you want to proceed with the options that are presented, number one. Um, so, I think that, uh, Mr. Suarez has presented those options very well. And, um, to the extent that you don't want either of the options presented, you do have discretion on that as well. You can choose to reject all bids. You, you, if you felt that the first most responsive bidder, uh, didn't, wasn't responsive for some reason, you could go with the second, but you'd have to make a finding on that. Um, if what you really wanna do is create a transition plan with Mr. Mathis, you can choose to do that. You, you have options. The, I was only bringing up the part of the charter because I think that's your one major constraint here.
And can, well, hold on just a second. And Mr., Mr. Freddie, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Did you, did you, your office evaluate these, these candidate, these companies?
I do not.
You did not?
I don't get involved in the evaluation process. I only present you guys with the options.
I was just curious to see, you know.
I asked the same question.
I was just curious to see how you evaluated them and everything, since there seemed to be some problem with the evaluations. But, um, you know, I mean, you don't have to go with the top evaluated one. You can choose either one of them in there. If you want the number, what, what was that, number two in your, uh, the second one in your, in your evaluation? If that's what they wanted to go on that, I mean, that's our choice, okay?
Ms. Myers, I know, I've, I've called you out once before, and I'm gonna do it again. I really would love to hear what you have to say, having heard the debate and the discussion. I think you bring a lot to the table, and if your position is unchanged, then it's unchanged, okay?
I think we, I mean, we're, we're talking about something that you, you already know the answer. We, we wanna, I think we're gonna take Mr. Matthews as our, as, in other words, within the next six months, he'll be guided into the city manager position. Is that what we're looking at? I don't know, you know, I don't know if that requires a vote or anything. I mean, all I think that requires is that we, we table this whole thing, unless we wanna just create more, more paperwork, and we'll have a list of people. But we're not gonna pick any of them anyway. And we can't use these people that we get as the number-two position. Of course, it's the function of the city manager to hire this, the assistant, not us.
I have a question for Mr. Suarez. Um, I see the response deadline here was February twentieth, obviously, it's May.
Yeah.
Was there a, a time on the bids, like, for how long they'd be good for?
Normally ninety days, but because it's an RFP, it doesn't really, there's no.
But they didn't, that's not a part of this, so they could still be good.
Yeah, absolutely.
So then we could just table this for ninety days?
And what happens if Mr. Mathis is not prepared in ninety days?
Well, what happens if?
Well, I, 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 I'm sorry.
Well, that's why I say we move the process forward. So if he's not, we have people that have applied. That's, that's my thinking. If he said, I'm ready to take the job today, I think that's a different conversation. But if he's not ready to take the job today, then we could start the process, see who we find, and see if he's inspired by anybody.
Well, what about if he says, I'm gonna take the job in ninety days?
Well, we'd have other people to look at and compare and see how they get along. And, I mean, we deal with that when it comes.
Well, he's, he's here as the assistant, uh, city manager right now. I think we still need to move this process forward so we can see what's out there. And of course, at the end, and whenever the process come through, if that's, it worked out, it worked out. I don't think we need to postpone this and put this all on hold here while we're trying to determine whether he wants the job or whether he gonna be able to grow into the job is where I'm here and everything. Uh, I just, I think we'd be wasting our time. As I said before, we put a process in place, and I think we need to stick with the process.
I'm gonna shoot my shot and make a motion to hire Baker Tilly Advisory Group for the RFP.
Okay, I've motioned to hire, what, that number-two Baker?
Baker Tilly.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second here? No second, uh, motion fail to go forward, no second. Is there another?
I'm gonna make a motion to deny number eighteen Executive Recruitment Services for City Manager with the expectation that we get a transition plan within sixty days for Dan Mathis to become city manager.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to deny item number eighteen, evaluation of RFP for the Executive Recruitment Services for the City Manager with the added verbiage of, uh, have Mr. Mathis transition into the city's managed position within sixty days.
To have a plan within sixty days.
To have a what?
Have the plan within sixty days, to have everything ready to move forward.
Ju, just for clarity, you want him and I to get together and decide how quickly he could fulfill that role?
Correct, and I'd like that plan presented to the city council.
In sixty days.
Within sixty days, and then we can take a vote on whether he becomes city manager at that point. That gives you plenty of time to dabble your eyes, cross your t's. And if he says no at sixty days, then we move on.
Would you consider amending your motion to table item number eighteen pending that review and possibly giving it a thirty-day timeline? If we deny this, we, we've gotta send it back out to RFP if the plan doesn't work.
And, and that's why I would, I, I hate to jump in here.
No, come in.
To, 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 to the extent that amendments are being considered, denying an item is a little different. What I, what I would ask you to consider is a motion, if it's your pleasure, to terminate the process. In other words, we don't deny, we can't deny this. It is what it is, the rankings have been published. I think what you're talking about is terminating the process.
Right.
Is that correct?
Correct. So, and I can amend that motion. If we table it for the sixty days, then it would come back to us with their plan?
Yeah, so you could, you could definitely move the table.
Since you're my second, are you?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
You, so you retract, retracting your first motion.
Yep, so, yee-haw. Um, so I'm gonna retract my motion for item number eighteen, Executive Recruitment Services for City Manager, and make a motion to tight-table item number eighteen, Executive Recruitment Services for City Manager with the expectation that within sixty days, we have a transition plan brought before city council.
Second.
Do we wanna table or to terminate?
He said table.
Better to table.
He said we could table it, and then we can terminate it at the time they bring us a plan, if we have a plan that everybody approves.
Okay.
If we terminate, Mr. Mayor, then we have to restart the RFP process.
No, I don't wanna do that again.
And I don't wanna read those again.
Uh-uh. I'm sorry.
Well, we didn't have to read it the first time. We could.
I did.
I did, too.
There wasn't a we.
You all elected to do that, you could've left it with procurement whose job it is to do that, see? But you all chose to do this. All right, but it was okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second to, uh, to table item number eighteen for sixty days, was it?
For sixty days.
Sixty days. And Freddie, that's, that's still fall within the ninety-day period, right?
Yeah, it should be fine. It'll be fine.
The proposal, of course, we've been had these proposals for quite a while.
Yes, uh, they'll, they'll, it'll be fine. It's normally ninety days for the proposal, you have a little more leeway.
Okay.
Um, it all comes out to the, the firm if they want to proceed or not, but I'm sure they will be open to proceed.
Because I think all these proposals came in way back in February.
Yeah.
Before we vote, if we can, can we look at the calendar and actually put a date on it rather than saying sixty days? I'm concerned about July fourth potentially causing issues. And didn't we move back, did we move back June or July to the twenty-ninth?
We only have one council meeting in July.
Thank you.
That will be the July twenty-ninth meeting.
Yes, so what's the last June meeting? Thank you, Tracy.
July twenty-ninth?
Good, uh, July twenty-ninth would be a little bit more than ninety, sixty days, wouldn't it?
Should make it ninety days.
Should make it ninety days then.
June twenty-fourth.
Well, I said within sixty, so to make it the last week in June.
You say within sixty, yes.
Within sixty, so just make it the last.
June twenty-fourth?
So the last week of June.
Last week of June, last meeting in June.
The only thing I'd ask you to consider is, we're going through our budget process in the month of June. So just keep that in mind. If you guys want us to work out a process and finish the budgeting with all the department heads, I don't know if we can give it the.
Yeah. So we, so we need to push it back.
I'm just, you just need to consider that.
Yeah, we need to push it back.
Folks, if we, if we go, if we go to the end of July and Mr. Mathis isn't ready, we're starting this process, which is four months to get a new city manager.
Freddie, Dan, Dan, why don't you come to the mic?
Excuse me, when is the drop-dead date on the, on these proposals?
The one that we'll do?
Yeah, that, that, they, we'll have to re, re, uh, submit the RFP.
February twenty?
Yeah, but I'm talking about that.
What's the latest we can go for using the RFP?
Ninety days for February twentieth, at least, per, was in the RFP. But normally, it's always a little bit of flex on that.
Flexibility on that.
So we pretty much almost at the ninety days right now.
Pretty much.
I'll tell you, I'm not convinced that they'll maintain the prices for another two months, but.
Well, see, and that's, that's what I'm concerned with, with, yeah, because we already at the, almost at the ninety-day point right now, because these came in way back in February. You see, and there's a ninety days after that, prices and everything else goes up. So you, you, you know, you, I was talking about that another sixty. So February, March, April, you almost right to ninety days.
Mr. Suarez could be directed to go confirm.
I was just about to say that. It's still, would it still be valid in sixty days, the prices there? Could you ask them that?
Absolutely. I could definitely, I ask them to, if they wanted to extend the pricing.
Yes.
If not, I'm a good negotiator, I'm a preshier, they'll extend, they'll keep the price the same.
We can push it back, yeah.
So if I need to amend that, do I need to retract and amend again to ninety, Christian?
Well, I would ask that you table it to a specific date if that's what you're gonna do. Don't do ninety, just say July twenty-nine.
How about July twenty-ninth then?
Yeah.
I mean.
How full is our agenda on July twenty-ninth?
It's gonna be full, it's the only one in the month.
You don't have anything on it?
No.
I didn't know if y'all had any drop-dead presentations or anything like that.
At this point, you know, we concerned about it, but at this point, come next month and another couple of weeks, basically, I think it's gonna be a bad time period because we all in the budget all the way through into September.
Right.
Okay? Uh, and trying to transition, if you're gonna do it.
They just have to have a plan. That's all I'm asking for, is a plan. Can you do a planning?
I, we, we can definitely do a plan. And I apologize about this, being unconventional, me speaking up here. But I do wanna say thank you for all of the kind words. Um, I, it's kinda nice to inflate my head on that. So I appreciate that. Uh, Councilmember Strange, I'm committing to you, I do want this job. I wouldn't have applied for it four years ago if I didn't want it. I absolutely want this job. I enjoy working with Rick. He is an incredible leader and mentor. So I don't wanna short-change that, I wanna get the experience with him. And I think together, we're doing some great things, and I think we're gonna continue to do that. So I don't wanna short-change him. We will have a plan, but I, I ask that I'm gonna be out of town the last two weeks in June. So the last meeting in June is, I won't be here to present the plan to you. We can do it in July if that's acceptable. Whichever meeting in July, I think, would be fine. Uh, we can work it around the budget. I don't think it's gonna take long. I think Rick and I are both on the same page on a lot of stuff that we talked about. So I think we can come up with a plan. But I, I, I would like that July time, but I, I just wanna reiterate, I'm a hundred percent interested in this job, and I do want it. I'm not, I wasn't raising my hand because I wanted to hear all the discussion first, but I promise you, I'm.
So July twenty-ninth would be a good date.
So I'm gonna amend my motion to specifically July twenty-ninth. Are you amenable to that, Bill?
Yes.
Or Shonda?
Well, and with that, uh, can you change, I would say, change vote and just terminate the number eighteen? So basically.
We're gonna, we killed number eighteen on that date. It would come back to us and we would terminate then, if that's what we so choose to do.
Mr. Mathis, you are not going to change your mind?
So I'm gonna-
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, uh, to, um, table item number eighteen to July twenty ninth, was it? July twenty ninth with the, uh, including the language to, to transition Mr. Mathis into the City Manager position at that time. Is that about right?
Have a plan to transition.
Have the plan to transition. Yes. You said plan, didn't you?
I did say plan.
Yeah, you said plan.
A plan to transition.
Mr. Mayor, I think what he's trying to do is figure out how he can keep Mr. Van Wagner around long enough to finish special projects. Am I reading between the lines on this one?
Well, I understand.
That's why we're talking about a transition plan, cause you're, cause there's a lot of projects I know he's working on that he's kind of important to the, to the project.
My, my understanding of why you're tabling it is that you might reject the plan for some reason.
Correct.
And, and if that's the case, then you're gonna want to-
Have our fall back.
Reverse back to what Freddie's presented to you.
Exactly.
Yes.
That's why we did it.
So we're tabling, we're not terminating, we're tabling.
We have tabled eighteen with the expectation that they bring a plan back on July twenty ninth for the transition from interim Rick Van Wagner to permanent Dan Mathis, and then they can figure out what they do with Rick.
I believe at that point you're talking-
Rick's down there just going, okay! Go me to the wolves!
So let me, can I ask this question? If we, if, come that time, if you reject the plan to transition, then what?
Then we go back, then we pick up, run the thing and run through it.
Yeah, I guess that's why I'm having trouble with trying to, trying to, uh, table this and everything, because if you're gonna, then you're gonna almost start this whole process and add time on, so in that case, for us, I'm concerned, we go ahead and approve this, have a company, cause it's gonna be another thirty to sixty days before anything be done, okay? Cause they're gonna have to come out, whatever company, by the time Freddie contacted and get everything, they're gonna have to come out and meet with each one of us, and we have to give them that. So anything, it'll be, I would say at least sixty days before, uh, we start even sending any candidates submitted and everything, and at that point, if your plan is working, hey, we can always terminate it at that time, okay? But in the meantime, let the process continue.
Mr. Mayor, I, I completely agree with you. I agree, I agree with you, and I share your concerns.
Yeah.
Mr. Mathis just affirmed to me that he will not change his mind.
Okay.
And it is, it's important to me-
So why, why we need a plan to transition, just say transition him into it, we don't need a plan.
Well, yeah.
See, that, that, I guess that's what's confusing me, cause you're saying a plan to transition, but if the plan doesn't work, we gonna start all over again, okay?
I think he makes valid points, folks. I mean, why are we prolonging it?
So-
I, I think we, because we've already established the ninety day continuation of the interim, so that, it has to be in the ninety, after that ninety day period.
Well, well, that, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Because you can't terminate in the middle of the ninety day period.
Yes, we can terminate his, his contract, we can turn, we can terminate it at any time, so.
In fact, what the contract says is, uh, Mr. Van Wagner will serve until he is, the permanent one is appointed or the expiration, so it's either or.
Yeah, you can, you can terminate, so.
Or a sequence, yeah.
Yeah.
But what, we could use that ninety days as part of our, the contingency, you know, so this way, there's not always multiple dates.
Hey, I have no-
Hold on, we, I'm just gonna say we've got a motion, we've got a motion, and I'm not gonna change my motion, because I've been burned before on saying yes to things, and then we end up funding things, and I'm not into funding things that we don't need, and so I'm just not going to approve something that could end up being funded, we spend money on, and it's a waste of time, effort, and energy for staff, so-
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nope, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not gonna change my motion, and if we have a second, then call, call it over.
I have a motion and a second, without any, is there, in no further discussion, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair vote nay, one oh. Uh, motion passes four one, okay? Item number nineteen, introduction for ordinance number two zero two five dash zero one one. Uh, let me ask this, before, I'm sorry, do you wanna hear from the public on all these introductions?
Well, if, if someone, the, the answer is, a public hearing is not required.
Right.
But if there is someone who wants to comment, uh, just like anything else, usually there's a right to that.
Okay.
If they let you know.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Strange.
Okay. In ordinance under the Code of Ordinances of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the City of Claremont, referred to in chapter one twenty-two of ordinance number two eighty-nine C, Code of Ordinances, rezoning the real properties described herein as shown below, providing for conflict severability, administrative correction of Scrivener's error, recording, publication, and an effective date.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to address this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address in half three minutes. Anyone in the public wish to address this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address in half three minutes.
Hi, I'm Tom Kovach, and I own the land. I also want to say that it was zoned industrial before I purchased it and had an acceptance for a PUD which has run out, not because I didn't wanna build the distillery and everything else, it was because the state of Florida wouldn't grant me two hundred fifty thousand gallons, and I couldn't operate and put eighteen million dollars into the project without that being done. So I decided to change it. The PUD ran out, and I'm changing it back to commercial, and to see what may develop from there. And that's it, simple as that.
Okay.
And I think the, uh, my son was here, uh, did his presentation to the planning and zoning, and I think they went completely off kilter and didn't understand the simplest of asks, which was to just zone it commercial, which is in your plan anyway. And I was appalled that it got voted down six to one and just wasn't correct, and that's what I'm asking. I guess that'll get voted another time, but I just wanted to clear that up, it was a simple ask, not a major debate function. It's in your plan, and I will plan to do something very nice with that property, but it's my property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is a public hearing, anyone in the public wish to address this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address in half three minutes. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, a closed public comment, or say council.
I have to tell you, I strongly oppose the rezoning request. Planning and zoning voted against at six to one, and rezoning to C two, general commercial, removes the community's protection and opens doors to high traffic, high impact, like a gas station or something like that, with no public comment input. This corner sits on fifty and twelve street, where they couldn't have, on, on fifty, there can't be any egress or ingress, where that would mean that they would have to put the egress on twelve street, which is a, a residential area, it would create a huge impact. So I, that's why I totally reject it. I think it, it, we have to think of the citizens in this area, because we don't wanna have commercial traffic on a residential street. The PUD was initially set for a distillery, I believe, right? With a tasting bar and things like that? And that's what the council approved. There's no way I'm gonna vote for a blanket zoning of a property as this is proposed.
Okay, uh, John. Counsel voted to give a PUD because they wanted to put the distillery in there first, right? Then prior to that, it was commercial, right?
Um, actually, before that, it was industrial.
Industrial, right.
When it was Exel Tech.
Right, cause it was, it was a, it was a business sitting down on that corner, well, when I grew up here, it was called, caused, uh, Conslent Steel.
Correct.
And they changed over, there's another name there. So it's always been somewhat commercial, business, industrial type piece of property, and that's why we rezoned, uh, and gave PUD because of what they was trying to do with it. Um, I have no problem with me rezoning it, and I know it's, we have no understanding of what's going in there right now, but, uh, need I mind you, we, we also, uh, zoned another piece of property, zoned another piece of property to commercial without a site plan or any plan on what was going in there just about five, six months ago, we sat here. So I'm afraid we can end up getting ourselves in trouble if we, we try to almost single this person out, simply cause he doesn't have a site plan, uh, because as I say, I know we've, we've done it here already in the, about six months ago, okay?
Yeah, and I'm not gonna make a habit of asking for site plans before I approve something. I'd rather see a, a form-based code. For those of you who've been watching me, I would like to see a comprehensive plan with a code that matches, so until we get that, um, I would much rather see, he can't do the distillery, because the state won't let him.
No.
Um, that's not new, I've known about that for a long time, and it's disappointing, but, you know, it, it can't be done, and I would much rather see commercial than industrial on that corner. So I, I appreciate the concerns with it, and I don't like the way our code is written, but that's on us. And I'm gonna say again, I'd like to see a form-based code, I'd like to see a comprehensive plan. I'm gonna keep saying it as long as we get these applications. Until then, it meets our future land use, and I think it's better than industrial.
Okay.
And I'm excited to hear he wants to do something beautiful with the property.
And-
As long as I am sitting up here, sir, I will hold you to that.
Question, John, another question, John.
Yes, sir.
If we approve this, what can he put in there without our approval?
Um, here's the list of permitted uses, but let me just remind you, in the C two general commercial, anything, a building over twenty thousand square feet has to come back to you for approval.
It's twenty thousand?
It's twenty thousand for C two general commercial, but the, the current plan, uh, was sixty thousand square feet of building space.
Okay.
The site's about six acres, um, so it, more than likely, you're gonna, if, if it's, depending on the use.
Okay.
It could potentially come back to you. Also, the current PUD has seven waivers that were granted as part of the PUD. Um, more than likely, if, if they develop the property, they might need one of those waivers.
Mm-hmm.
We won't know till they do some, the site planning and, and those types of things, so more likely, they may come back to you again for one of those waiver requests.
Unless we have an updated code.
Yeah, that's true. Um, so here we have the list of uses, um, we have retail businesses, personal services, professional offices, um, some of these just won't fit, just due to the size of the property. Uh, restaurant or lounge, lodges, clubs, laundries, which could be hotel, motel, almost everyone we've done is more than twenty thousand square feet.
Yeah.
So it has to come back to you for conditional use permit. Uh, also, there was, um, two, uh, convenience stores and gas stations. Now, if they had a car wash component with it, they'd have to come back to you for it. If there is any automotive type use, such as, um, oil change, um, auto repair, it has to come back to you based on the use. So this is the permitted uses, but again, some of them are not realistic in terms of, you know, a recreation facility might be hard to put there.
Yes.
So due to the size limitation of the, of the site, some of these things were more than likely not happen.
So most likely, with the size of the property, which being six acres, just about anything they put there, gonna end up probably having to come back to us.
Depending on what they end up doing.
How they do it.
And, and again, the, the, one of the variances or waivers in the PUD, and I'll just share the plan from, from back then, Wayne can zoom.
Yeah, just trying to see if I can do something about that here.
Um, I'll just go ahead and slide it up here. These are the PUD waivers.
Okay.
One of them was a ten foot high retaining wall height. Again, they may need that, they may not, it depends, cause it was located down here on the southeast corner of the property, but again, they designed the, the water retention area here, the retaining walls. If they develop the site, they may not decide to put it there. So those types of things are kinda unknown until they get some site-specific data to, to, to present to us.
But I guess my concern, uh, one of my concern is until we rezon this, pretty much, he's, he's stuck there with that piece of property going nowhere almost.
That, that is correct, because the PUD ordinance says he'll develop in a substantial accordance to the, the, that site plan.
And we know he can't do the, uh, distillery, okay?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, and again, that, that's the-
I have no problem with it.
That's the PUD that was, uh, approved, the site plan with it, and as you can see, it's had a lot of moving parts to it, um, bottling, spirits production, commercial retail, there's a restaurant component, tasting area, um, and it just didn't materialize because of-
I'm sorry, Ms. Strange, it didn't work.
I know, I'm sad. I'd love it.
I, I still have the Gulf Heart ordinance for south of city, so-
Could go there after our meeting and-
Mr. Wagner, I do have a question. From a, from a future land use, are we putting ourselves in potential litigation by ignoring that if this was to be denied?
So I'll, I'll tell you something I, I often tell, and I think I've told you before, I don't know, is that people can sue for anything, you know? Even in the time that I've been city attorney, you know, we had what I consider a very frivolous appeal of a zoning decision, or a CUP that was issued. Um, and so I, I can't tell you we wouldn't have an issue or a claim. What I can tell you is, um, if you make a decision based on the code, so you have a, I'm gonna read it to you, section one oh one dash two eighty-four, it says that when you consider rezoning amendments, you shall consider whether it's justified by changed or changing conditions, whether adequate sites already exist for the proposed district use, in this case, C two, whether specific requirements of the Land Development Code are adequate to ensure compatibility with adjoining properties as required by the comp plan. Those are your three poll stars. So if your decision is consistent with that, then regardless of, of other decisions, you should have something that you can rely on. Now, I'll only add one other point, which I, staff has talked to you about the seven waivers, um, or seven variances in there. I don't know if that's ever been adequately, like, why does staff care about that? The reason is that in the past, those are all deviations from what your code said, so that's a big ask. So when they go away, from a staff perspective, you're bringing the property back to something that you want with your code, if that makes sense. So that's why staff cares about that. I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah. And of course, then, of course, tho- all those, uh, requests go away if we approve it, and of course, if any of those existed, they have to still come back to us, right? If they have to do the walls and all that?
Yes.
All that for a real, okay?
But we should assume that he'll develop without the need for any variances, and if it's approved in the commercial, then he'll do it, and he can, that's what we want, is builders to be able to build, you know, without having to come before us all the time and go through the process. So we should assume that, and, um, it, it's just the way our code is written right now. right now.
I'm sorry, Ms. Strange, I'm not going to ever assume that in clem up with the parking fees we have around here, especially on that piece of property.
That's fair.
So my question is, though, is why did planning and zoning then deny it?
I think they put their reasons on the record. There was a very robust discussion, and I'm not going to speak for them.
I wasn't in attendance, so I don't
I don't know if others want to be heard. They had a very robust discussion about this.
Do you want Mr. Bain to come up? He's in the audience.
Again, entertain a motion whether we go move this forward. This is just, this is just introduction. I know we wasting a lot of time on the introduction. We can go ahead and move this thing forward, or vote to move it forward, and of course, then all the other things. And before it come back to us, a lot of these things should be asked and taken up at that time. And of course, at that time, when it come back for us again, you can always deny it, okay?
I move to approve item number 19, ordinance number 2025-11.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve item for approval of item number, what was the name, item number 19?
19.
Introduction, ordinance number 2025-001. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Chair vote aye as well, motion passes 4-1. Item number 20, introduction of ordinance number 2025-04, excuse me, 014.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Florida, amending all chapters of the code mentioning business tax receipts, providing for conflict severability, administrative correction of scrivener's error, publication, and effective date.
Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public which addresses this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address in half three minutes. Is a public hearing. Anyone in the public which addresses this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address in half three minutes. Seeing no one, bring it back to council. Excuse me, excuse me, bring it back to council. What say council?
Motion to approve item number 20, ordinance number 2025-014, entry to business tax repeal amendments to code.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval of item number 20, introduction for ordinance number 2025-014. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the chair vote aye as well, motion passes 5-0. Item number 21, introduction for ordinance number 2025-017.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, amending the Land Development Code, Chapter 123, Vegetation, Article 1 in general, Section 123.1, Definitions, Article 2, Landscaping, Section 123.40, Parent C, Installation of Landscape Material, Section 123.42, Parent 4, Plant Material, Section 123.43, Parent E3, Parent F2, Parent K, Landscape Buffers, Section 123.46, Parent 2, Landscaping Adjacent to Fences, Walls, or Dumpster Enclosures, Section 123.47, Preferred Tree List, Section 123.48, Preferred Shrub List, Section 123.49, Non-Preferred Trees, Providing for Conflict, Severability, Codification, the Administrative Correction of Scrivener's Error, Publication, and an Effective Date.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public which addresses this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address in half three minutes. Anyone in the public which addresses this item may come to the microphone, state your name and address in half three minutes. Seeing no one, close public comment. What say council?
I have a motion to approve item number 21, ordinance number 2025-017, entry to Land Development Code amendment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of item number 21, introduction of ordinance number 2025-017. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair vote aye as well, motion passes 5-0. Item number 22, introduction for ordinance number 2025-018.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, amending Chapter 18, Environment and Natural Resources, Article 8, Water-Efficient Irrigation and Landscaping, Division 1 Generally, Section 18.212, Definitions, Section 18.216, Application of Landscape and Irrigation System Design Provisions, Section 18.218, Exception to Landscape Irrigation Provisions, Division 2 Irrigation, Section 18.247, Irrigation Plan Submental, Section 18.248, Irrigation System Design, Section 18.250, Landscape Irrigation Schedule, Division 3, Landscaping, Section 18.279, Landscaping Standards, Section 18.281, Design Standards, Providing for Conflict, Severability, Codification, the Administrative Correction of Scrivener's Error, Publication, and an Effective Date.
This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public which addresses this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address in half three minutes. Anyone in the public which addresses this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address in half three minutes. Seeing no one, I close public comment. What say council?
Motion to approve item number 22, ordinance number 2025-018, entry to irrigation and landscape regulations.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval of item number 22, introduction of ordinance number 2025-018. Any further discussion?
I have, I do have a question on this one. First of all, it has a requirement for landscaping, or excuse me, for irrigation. And with the water issues that we're having, I think that irrigation can be resolved, or turf can be resolved with alternative methods. And if I ask at the final reading not to include the mandatory irrigation, I don't know if that's a substantial change.
Keeping language out is acceptable on a second reading.
Okay. Okay, that's all I needed.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair vote aye as well, motion passes 5-0. Item number 23, introduction for ordinance number 2025-19.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, providing for the annexation of a certain parcel of land in accordance with the Interlocal Service Boundary Agreement dated December 2, 2014, providing for conflict, severability, administrative correction of scrivener's error, recording, publication, and an effective date.
This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public which addresses this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address in half three minutes.
Good evening, John Cruz. I just wanted to put on the record that in your supplemental folder, there was a change to the ordinance to this one and the next one to ensure current improvements to the project will continue forward with the current county PUD. What that means is they're doing some road improvements for both developments, and we don't want it just to be passed off immediately to us. We want them to complete that process through the county, and then also the plating with one of the projects. So that is in your, should be in your supplemental folder, those underlined, that was added to section two, and I believe was section in one of them.
But that'll all be in the package when it comes back to us?
Yeah, it'll all be in the pa, I just wanted to put it on record that those two ordinances will have that language change. And I know Attorney Wall and I worked on this earlier today when it came to our attention.
All right, thank you.
Because this could be substantial, some of these references are to the county's code and compliance with the county's code. Am I out of line that I would want anything they build to be in compliance with the city code?
No. So what it says is that what we're concerned about is work not being done. And so
To our standards.
No, actually, just being done, because there's work that's required by their PUD right now, that's in progress, for example. So what I'm worried about is we accept it, and suddenly it's not subject to their, and then they don't have requirements necessarily to complete the work.
They didn't finish the work.
Exactly. So that's all that's addressed. And then what, in this language, in order to address your concerns, it actually says, to the extent of a substantive conflict, well, we'll change that to substantive, conflict between the city and Lake County ordinance, the terms of the ordinance shall control, just in terms of the substance, for now. But when it's, if, if it's accepted, then it'll have to be rezoned into our PUD zoning anyways. So at that time, it transfers to us.
But aren't they building to the county, they're building to the county's standards, and then we're going to annex it, and then it's not to our standards, like the roads in particular, any lighting, any development? That's what I'm concerned about, and I just want to make sure that they're building to our standards and that they build it, but that they build it to our standards.
They are building, as part of the utility agreement that we worked with them, they are building to our standard. It's more of, they started the process in Lake County, and if, when we annex, it doesn't give them the ability to just say, okay, we're done dealing with the county. Claremont, you have to take it over. We want them to complete the job in terms of what they're working on now. And then once they get to that completion point, then it will transfer over to us. And correct me if that's not
Well, what is the timeframe on it? Is it?
One of them is within three months, or the final plat.
So why aren't we doing it then, at that point? Are we?
Just we need to collect the money. By doing it now, we'll be able to get it on the books and be able to collect, collect the impact fee. If we wait, we'll lose out.
But if we do it now, then are we, then are we letting them off the hook? Then that's what you're saying?
No, we're not letting, go ahead.
I'm not saying
No. We're not letting them off the hook. That's why we put that condition in there, that they're going to be held to that. And that was our concern. Yeah.
So just, just so everybody knows, in the St. Louis bill, ultimately, that comes down to our JPA, which doesn't address that stuff. And so
Yeah, I thought you were working on that.
Please speak to the folks, because our JPA needs to say anything within our local service boundary is going to be held to our codes, not county codes. That's how we end up with a lot of this crazy, is that county codes are not as strong as ours, and our JPA does not hold their feet to the fire. And then the county blames us for all kinds of issues that really they're creating. So hopefully, that JPA will come back to us and stick it to them.
I know you've been working on this for a while. Are you comfortable with the language of this one, that it
We can't do anything about it until that JPA, and I know Rick is working on that right now.
Our hands is kind of tied on this. Actually, before they went to the county on this project, they came to us, and we refused to give it to them because they didn't want to go to our standards at that time.
And now we're giving it to them?
Huh?
And now we're giving it to them?
Well, we're not giving it to them. When they went back to the county, it was approved in the county. What we've given is service, we providing service. And my thing is, yeah, we can sit here and say we don't want to annex it in, but we're going to still be providing the service, putting strain on our infrastructure and not collecting any money for it, okay?
It all comes down to our JPA.
So, so our JP, as you say, our JP, it doesn't hold it in to the fire. So we, at this point, we kind of stuck, and the best thing for us to do is annex it in so we can receive the impact fees and the money. So in the future, we not stuck here when we having to do roads and do some maintenance and everything, see?
Did the county rezon this property to allow for this development?
In terms of this one, Ivy Ridge, they did. We did oppose it. They came to us for utility agreement, as part of the utility agreement discussion, and I know the mayor was here, was we pressed them hard in terms of side yard setbacks. They wanted five foot. We ended up getting seven and a half feet. The way the JP is, is set up with Lake County, if you do PUD zoning, it throws everything out of the window. We did work with the applicant at the time when they came through. I feel that, for the most part, if not everything meets our code, from what I remember, lot sizes, setbacks, and I think road width, and I believe they're private roads. I'll pull the PUD to verify that.
What I'm questioning, Mr. Cruz, is some of the statements made by elected officials at the county level, that the cities continue to grow and the cities continue to develop. And my question is, is this a situation where the county has chosen to add development and add density, and then we are then forced to expand? And I just want to know if this is one of those examples where we caused this, or did the county cause this?
The county issued the PUD, and we're bringing it in.
I appreciate that. Thank you for the clarification.
Well, let me say this, as John said, and one of the things he just said, I appreciate the county on this one, because when we rejected because of setbacks and everything else, when it went back to the county, the county kind of held their feet to our setback, our standards, if I'm not mistaken. So I appreciate the county, which they didn't have to do. And that's what happened a lot of time. They end up putting them in at the county, county standards, and even put more strain on theirs because their density is more, their ordinance is called for more density than ours, okay? So, so I do appreciate the county for that. But the biggest thing is, we providing the service, we going to provide it whether we annex it in or not. But our thing is, we going to provide the service, let's annex it so we can collect the revenue and impact fee and get it in as soon as possible, so we can get it this year, okay?
Motion to approve item number 23, ordinance number 2025-019, entry to Ivy Ridge annexation.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval of item number 23, introduction of ordinance number 2025-019. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair vote aye as well. Item number 24, introduction for ordinance number 2025-2020.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, providing for the annexation of a certain parcel of land in accordance with the Interlocal Service Boundary Agreement dated December 2, 2014, providing for conflict, severability, administrative correction of scrivener's error, recording, publication, and an effective date.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public which addresses this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address in half three minutes. Anyone in the public which addresses this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address in half three minutes. Seeing no, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Susan Kane. I'm with Taylor Morrison Homes, and we are purchasing the property that is being developed. We're actively developing the McKinnon Groves project. I think some of you were out there for groundbreaking, and I appreciate that. I wish I could have been there that day, but I have family in town, and hopefully, we all know how that goes. So, family comes first. I would just like to say that we have worked with Mr. Cruz over the last couple of days. I just stumbled across this coming before the board today because this property is in a land bank situation. We didn't know when annexation was going to be occurring, and are glad that you're proceeding forward with it, and will be working with Mr. Cruz and the rest of staff to do what we need to do to get it annexed, and happy to be at Claremont. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public which addresses this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address in half three minutes. Anyone in the public which addresses this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address in half three minutes. Seeing no one, close public comment. What say council?
Motion to approve item number 24, ordinance number 2025-020, entry to McKinnon Groves annexation.
A second.
Have a motion and a second for approval of item number 24, which is an introduction for ordinance number 2025-020. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair vote aye as well. Motion carries 5-0. All right, reports, Mr. Van Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There will not be a workshop in the month of May. Also, wanted to let everybody know, there's the Traveling Vietnam Wall is going to be here starting May 24. It's going to actually start at 8:30 in the morning. It's going to start at Home Depot and then be moved to Waterfront Park, and it will be at Waterfront Park until May 26 at 3:00 p.m. Also, want to let everybody know, on May 26, the city offices are going to be closed, and on our Memorial Day. And also, on Memorial Day, there's going to be an event, Remember and Honor, on Monday, May 26, at Waterfront Park from 11:00 to 12:30. That's for events. Just for information for the whole council, I've been working with Jennifer Barker, Sean Parks, Kathleen Dial, talking about transport for ambulances. And I'm excited to tell you, for the first time in decades, there is serious conversation about how we can work together to create a better response time, and the city possibly having its own ambulance services, working under the certificate of Lake County. Kudos to Chief Azell and his team. We've worked very well hand in hand. We've worked politically, and now these guys are in the trenches working out the details. So I want to let you know, something significant and real is happening, and I hope to have information for you back in the near future. Wellness Way, I know we've been working on that for a decade. I'm pleased to tell you that Olympus started laying pipe. Mike Carroll started laying pipe for sewer and water. We've had some very passionate, sincere conversations. And again, I will give kudos to the city staff. Thank you for all your hard work. They have tried to hold his hand and be respectful and help him through this whole process, and we've been very, very transparent, asking him for movement, and we've asked the county for help. And I just got to give kudos to our staff and everybody. Wellness Way is moving. That's all I'm going to say. It's been sitting for a decade, and it's moving now. For whatever reason, it's moving. We're also working right now on Conserve 2. That's another thing we've been talking about for a decade plus. I guess I enjoy working on projects that are decade-old with dust. I don't know. Call it prayer and fasting, call it hard work, call it whatever you want. But I am optimistic, somehow, some way, with God's help, we'll figure out Conserve 2. So we're talking to a number of government officials, and we're excited about that. So I hope to bring something to you, significant work talking about in the near future. Also, we just got with the DeHoyas, Ms. DeHoya, which is another thing that's been a long-term thing, where we've been wanting to buy the property. And Dan Mathis and I, I brought him with me, and she eloquently gave us the opportunity, submit a offer to her for the first time ever. And she also said, why don't you consider buying my other property that's located, looking at the lake. So again, I would call that providential, that would take place. And I could go on and on, guys. There's just so many wonderful things happening. I give the staff a lot of credit for all that, and I think with focus and hard work, you can get a lot of things done. I am having conversations with you all on Meet Us in the Middle, and I need you all to meet me in the middle. Let me just say it that way. Not there yet. I need to figure out how to get a consensus with you all, but I think that's an important project. We are pursuing funding right now, but I really would love to know what we are getting funding for exactly with the design. So I need your help with that at some point. And then there has been conversations about a parking garage. I've had individually with you all, and I'd like to have a conversation where we all get on the same page with that as well. I think we have some opportunities in front of us. We have an amazing downtown that's starting to expand, and I'd love to get ahead of it and work on that with you, with the remainder of whatever time I have here with you guys. So that's my report, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you, sir. No workshop in May, eh? Wow. Amazing, amazing. Okay. When I get to my report, I ask you, Mr. Wa.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, you had asked me about tree canopies, and the answer is no, we're not subject to that. First of all, you had asked me about tree canopies and the answer is no, we're not subject to that tree canopy requirement that was suggested to you. Okay? Number two is we've been working, I've been working with planning and development staff on several matters. We are beginning to undertake a review of signage at the request of members of the city council. Also at planning and zoning this last week, we had a very robust discussion about the kind of rules that apply to quasi judicial hearings. And just by way of reminder, you know, normally when you have a hearing on a rezoning or a CUP or something like that, we call that a quasi judicial hearing. And your decisions are limited to the evidence that comes at that hearing. And you have probably heard your city attorney say before, you know, you're not supposed to do ex party communications. You know, you're not supposed to go talk to the applicant outside the hearing and that kind of thing. And the reason is that that could be prejudicial. You're not allowed to do site visits insofar as that's prejudicial. And that's been very frustrating to members of our P and Z board. I think it might be frustrating on occasion to you. There is a solution. According to Florida statute 286.0115, we can, as a city council or P and Z board, adopt rules that allow you to do site visits, that allow you to get your own expert opinions and to do ex party communications. The condition, there's two conditions to that. One is you have to approve it as a rule by resolution or ordinance. But also any such communications, any such site visits have to be disclosed on the record fully, subject to those rules. So we have prepared a draft of that for the P and Z board's consideration. We're reviewing with staff now. I just wanted you to know that that's going to be something for you to think about coming up. And then, let's see, we're working with Nadine Olinger regarding some revisions on the personnel manual. So that's going to, I mean, there's a lot of discussions being had with that, so that's coming down. My understanding is that Olympus CDD has executed the warranty deed for the fire station dedication. So that has been done and that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Let me say, he mentioned the tree canopy. What it was, I received the email, people complaining about the height of our trees over our streets, mainly on Lakeshore, 12th Street and things like this. State and county has, well, state law is everything has to be at least 14 feet. That's mainly because on state roads, it has to be 14 feet over passes and everything. Because tractor trailers has a limit height of 13/6, okay? So to keep everything standard, it has to be 14 feet. But I sent it to Mr. Wa because I didn't think the city have to abide by that state law within the city limits. And so that's what he was referring to. People, I actually got an email saying we need to trim our trees and get with the state law and the county law following this jurisdiction. So before I got back with the people, I wanted to make the ruling because if that was the case, it was going to cost us a lot of money to trim trees, okay, in the city. But city has the authority to limit weight limits and vehicle sizes in the city, so we don't have to. I'm assuming that's why we don't have to.
Yeah, you have control over your city roads.
Okay, and that's what I thought. And so that's what he was referring to, if anybody come to you, that's what it was all about, the tree canopy. So thank you, Mr. Wa, for looking into that for me. Councilmember Howard.
So Rick led into this and we just need to have a discussion on it. Things with the parking lot that the church owns are changing and changing rapidly. They have started to charge for certain nights and they can do that within a 10 day period. I don't think that that is in the, in the spirit of our agreement with them. They also have asked us to pay for renovations on their parking lot. I disagree with some of the stuff that they've said. The problem is, is that that's 100 spots. And we have put off this parking garage for so long that in order to build it, we're going to lose another 100 spots. So I get that people say we have a walking problem, but we don't. We have a parking problem and we have to start doing planning. And so I'd really like this council to get all on the same page so that we can figure out this parking issue. Because we cannot rely on rental lots for the city. It is not fair to the businesses, it's not fair to the residents. Probably the biggest complaint that I get in Claremont is downtown parking. And if you go down there even during the weekdays, it is now full on Wednesday, Thursdays, and Fridays. Monday's a little slow, but it is very busy all the time. And if we lose this lot, then we're upside down. In order to build a new lot, we have to shut down another lot. So we're down 200 parking spots for probably two years. And this is not good planning. So I'd appreciate if we could get that on a workshop or get it moving wherever we're going to move it. But I'm very concerned.
Mr. Van Wagner, does my understanding that there is an application for a comprehensive plan, a code for the CRA that has been provided to you or is coming to you?
Yes.
And I think that would address the parking lot issue, at least to get me on the same page with Mr. Howard for where it should be, how we should fund it, things like that. What do you need from this council to be able to move forward with those magical words that I keep using, comp plan?
I just need to finish it and get with Freddie and bring it to the council. So they were massaging it and working on some things, so I can bring it to you. So we're pretty close to being able to bring that before the council.
Okay.
That's it, Ms. Howard? Okay, Councilmember Myers.
I attended the MPO in Leesburg and FDOT is going to be providing $50,000 to do a study on state road 50 to see how they can improve our traffic. So I'm like, yes, because they don't really give a whole lot of money, so yay. The other thing is I asked our city manager and deputy to find a solution to the notification of water leaks. I had received emails from citizens about the water leaks. And when I spoke with the lady over the water utility, she explained to me the process, which seems archaic. You know, you send a letter and then you know how long snail mail can be and it just keeps, it just goes up. So it's a letter, then it's, if it's so many more gallons, then it's a call. Then if it's so many more gallons, then it's a visit. We just need a better system to notify our citizens because that's a lot of water and a lot of money that is being wasted. So they are looking into that to improve the notification system for our citizens on that. Go ahead.
I was at a meeting this past week and.
Are you microphone on, Mr.? Sorry, thank you. I was at a meeting this past week with the VP of Sunshine and they're, I made it, I made them fully aware of some of the challenges we're experiencing with 700 leaks. At a time sometimes. And I told them about some of the terrible situations. They said they're fully aware and they're internally talking about how they can create a software to do this. But I made the crazy thing of asking how long they thought this could take and they told me two and a half years. So I told them, that's not good. We need better than that. So that was our conversation with our provider, just trying to do that. But I know we are working on the Tyler system to try to make that better right now internally. But they're saying two and a half years and I reminded them, we tried to hire outside firms to pay so we could interact with their system. We're willing to put the money in, we're willing to do the things we need. And there was an openness to try to work with us, but a unsure, they were unsure how to help us and work with us. But I brought that up, I believe he was the VP of the organization this past week.
Thank you for that. I also attended the League of Mayors Roundtable in Sanford. It was a wonderful time. It was, it was just amazing to see the city manager, the mayor, their business owners just working together to come up with solutions to their problems. And one of the things that I thought was neat that they shared is that they have a trolley in their downtown and it has brought 13,000 more people to their downtown and it has revitalized it. And so I was like, why can't we have that here in Claremont? That would help with our track, you know, our lack of parking and whatnot. And I was going to ask about the parking garage, but Todd already took care of that. But I just wanted to bring that out as an option, which your thoughts on that. And then the other thing I wanted to share is that I attended the Project Scholars 2025 that Pig on the Pond funds. I helped evaluate the applicants and so it was wonderful to meet the four winners. And what they get is they get $10,000 to go toward college. It was, yeah, it's an amazing thing that they do for them. And they also shared that they have made it so the foundation that it will go on continuously. So every year, students from our area can apply to get the scholarship to go to college, which I think is fabulous. And so that concludes my report.
Okay, let me just piggyback on her while I'm thinking about it because I was at the Project Scholar too. But also, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, they also announced the fact that not only they get the $10,000 this year, but they will be following these kids for the next four years.
Yes, yes, I forgot that, yes. All through the four, four years at their school, isn't that fabulous?
So kudos to Pig on the Pond. And everything. And of course, I know they was on the agenda for approval for next year's event and everything. But I thought it was fantastic last night that they shared that with us. That fact that not only they're giving them $10,000, but for the next four years, they'll be, they'll be giving these kids money for the next four years. And I thought it was also fantastic, the endowment would be able to go on and forever. Okay, they had their point, so great. And the other thing I wanted to piggyback on, that she didn't say at the roundtable in Sanford and everything was, they did talk about the trolley, but my interesting thing, I took away from it was the fact that they did it through the CRA.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so I took that away and I wanted to talk to somebody, hey, I don't know, maybe we can get with them and see how they, they fund this thing through the CRA and everything else, a trolley for the city and everything, so.
So I sit on the main street board and we're already having discussions on trolleys.
Fabulous.
It's already, it's already been talked about. There were some hiccups in storage and that kind of stuff, so we'll look at it.
Okay, so we're all on the same page, that's wonderful.
So that's good, you know, but I just thought it was amazing when they told me it was all funded through the CRA. I said, okay, work with me.
Yeah, I forgot that part. Yeah, that's okay, I forgot that part. No, I'm glad you were there to say that, yeah, I forgot that part. But it was a wonderful time.
Councilmember Peterson.
Well, first of all, I'm very excited that you brought up that thing about the ambulances coming in. And I just want to give Chief Azell mucho kudos on being able to go over Lake County on this because, you know, I was at their meeting and they kept on talking about how we would fracture the system. But I know he's figuring out ways how we can put a cast on that and get the ambulances here in Claremont so we can get quick response times for our residents and citizens. Because this, it saves lives. The other thing, this last period is I went to EMO 2. It was a very interesting thing. We, you know, I learned a lot about finances, which is way more than I wanted to learn. But it was, but it, you know, through two hours, it wasn't too boring, but a lot of coffee and I made it through. And it was an interesting time. It's, it's a constantly learning experience because, you know, all I really know is drugs. So now I'm learning this new aspect of my life. So it's, it's a fun time. I just want to thank everybody here for bearing with me as I might say yea instead of nay. But thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Strange.
You know, in that vein, I reflect on the last five months of what this council and staff have been through and gone through and how our first meeting went and then just that comment right there. And even the issues that we addressed tonight that could have been very challenging. I just, I think it's very, it's night and day and it speaks to every person up here's love for Claremont and for its citizens and its staff. And I just want to recognize that and thank all of you for what you've contributed to, what's been a positive experience for me, especially as of late. Couple things I'm looking for timelines on, so Mr. Van Wagner, the JPA came up tonight? If we can get, and maybe the next meeting, a report or if you want to send us.
I can give you an update. We had our first significant conversation with them last week. And we didn't, the county wasn't present. It was their, it was their group that writes it for them. So it was their company and us. And it was a form that they have and they go through series of questions. And that's kind of how we went through the whole thing. And we're supposed to have it printed and given to us to look at and review. You want to add anything to that, Dan?
Yeah, there was a, while we were sitting here in the meeting, there was Jennifer from the county just set up a meeting to have a roundtable discussion on the JPA for June 30th, so we will be meeting coming up soon.
Awesome, cool.
So hadn't it already been scheduled for, for countywide?
Well, there was one with the mayor and the county manager, that was a different one. And then we had this meeting after I talked to them and said, the council wants me to work on the JPA. So they went ahead and put their consulting firm with us after we did that. And this is a new, this is a new date after we had the meeting with the consulting firm. So this is you all just telling me and the staff, we want to work on this. But you're right, there is a date where you and me are supposed to attend a meeting, but that's for the whole county.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought, they had sent me a message saying they were going to do it well, because we was doing them before, okay? Where they made me with all the counties, all the cities and counties and everything. The county got together and we gave input for JPAs. And not just city manager and mayor, but council member was invited along with that as well, okay? But I thought they had set another date in June for that, so.
There's another meeting for that, but this one's for us individually.
Well, we need to really look at our JPA because my, they trying, I think, I'm hearing things about they trying to force thing in the JPA on us that we don't want to do, so we need to really look at it, okay? Thing, I'm sorry.
Sounds like we got the dream team on it, I like it. You gentlemen, do your thing. I'm right in the middle. When can we, and what is the best process for us to address the surplus property? Do we need a workshop? Do we get a list? What's?
I've spent hours with our staff and we've identified properties that we don't know what your vision is for. So we would like to bring those properties that the staff feels like, and I'm leaning on their years of expertise rather than my five months. So when I bring that to you, it'll be sincerely things, they're not sure what this council wants us to do. So I could save you a workshop and bring those to you if you'd like and let you just talk through them and tell us what you'd like to do with those.
How do you feel about him bringing them to us? We review them, just, I'm thinking individually because we don't necessarily, if he brings them to us and gets a feel and then brings it to a meeting, or if there's a lot of discussion, we're going to start budgeting in July?
We're already working on it.
You're budgeting, but for us.
Yeah, we're going to talk to you in July.
We're going to start workshopping in July. Do you want to, worst case, say, at the first workshop, we have a surplus meeting to start it? If we can't resolve it efficiently between now and then?
I can start bringing properties to you if you'd like, just to get clarity what you want me to do.
I think you can do it individually and that way we can all work through and see where we're at. In the, in the, in the listing and the properties that I saw, I think a lot of it, you're just going to look at and be like, okay, there's no reason for us to own it. There's a lot of things you're going to be like.
Like, Mr. Mayor, you brought up Lake Dot and there's a process to certain things that are in the downtown. So it's going to take a little more effort, but we've got the property where the old police station was, the parking lot we need to address. This council needs to give us direction on the fire prevention office across the street. So those are three right out of the gate, I need your direction on, and the staff. So I can start bringing properties if you're comfortable with that, I can start doing that. Just in an effort to try to streamline our timetable after three and a half hours, I'm aware of your time, so just trying to be.
How about if staff recommends selling, like we don't have a plan, bring us that list so that we can put it on an agenda to consider? Does that sound, and if anybody wants to pull it, we can workshop it. Does that sound like a good strategy?
We have to, we have to list that as surplus.
Right, exactly.
Is the problem. So if he wants to bring five at a time, then I mean.
I'll start bringing them before you, if that's the direction you're asking me to do. And then you guys just start telling us.
I think that's the easy way.
One by one, what you want me to do.
Five at a time, sounds good, I like that. That way, if we talk about one, we talk about one.
And, and Mr. Mayor, we are working on a design that you had requested for a skate park and pickleball courts where the VW building is. So Brian Foreman, Dan and myself are actually working on a potential design to bring before the council also for that as well.
If we want USA BMX, I could make a phone call.
What was it?
If we want USA BMX for anything?
Okay, well, I don't know.
Do we like BMX?
Are you done, Mr. Van Wagner?
I thought I was already.
I'm the one that's dragged it out.
I'm sorry.
If, if we have any properties that have hills or terrain, BMX is perfect for anything with terrain. Obviously, we're in Claremont, right, mountains? So if we have any that are in the surplus, I'd be happy to send that off to the BMX crew and see if they see any potential. Employee handbook came up tonight, there was a question about processes, I know there's conversation. When can we expect to see that for review?
Well, one of the discussions that's being had right now is whether or not to present it with other potential changes being talked about such as personnel, the week, the work week, possible change, for example. And so should it be done piecemeal, should it be all together? We could reasonably present it in June or July.
Does it impact the budget potentially? Does it impact the budget potentially?
I think it does not.
Can it be put together before we go into budgeting? Whatever you want to present.
Yes, I, I, I just hesitate, Nadine, she wasn't able to, she had to go for an emergency, so I can't get in by Friday to get it into the deadline, to get it onto the next agenda in May. So I, I think sometime in June we could do that, but I know Mr. Mathis is also gone in June, and you're going to want his involvement in that discussion, so we'll just have to figure out if it's in July or two, we'll figure that out, though.
Okay. Are we able to, and can you counsel me on, I'm traveling to the national championships later this month, and I'm trying to figure out if I'm flying home. I heard through the, a little birdie, that there was potential to appear remotely? Is that something?
Well, I will say that I thought I was going to be absent for P&amp;Z last week, because I had a trial in Miami, but I ended up being able to make it, and preparations were made for me to appear by phone. Your city has these, this mechanism has been used before. The only requirement, of course, is that a quorum has to be present in person of the voting members. So one, two people, voting members can appear remotely, not three, unless there's a kind of.
You have to have three on the dais.
Exactly, have to have at least three on the dais, unless the governor suspends that requirement again by executive order. Question will ask whether that's legal. In any event, my understanding, and I don't want to put words in Wayne's mouth as well, is that there may be an additional capacity coming by teams, so we may have video capacity as well.
And would I be able to vote?
Yes, you can vote.
Are you all comfortable if I do that?
Yes, okay, because I think we also, we working to try to make, make it possible for residents to act remotely as well and participate in council, so. So all that's been done, so I have no problem with it.
Okay, great. Root and Branch Films was approved tonight, can you give us an idea of what that film is? It sounds fine.
What was that?
We're going to be a site for a movie?
It's on the consent agenda.
Yeah, it was on consent. Just.
From what I understand, they're only going to be here for a few nights, and it's a 1960s based film, it's a murder mystery type thing. So they're just going to be filming late at night in downtown.
Awesome, do we get credit on the film?
Uh, the places that they're filming are definitely getting credit. I would assume they typically give the city's credit.
Little card at the end.
They typically give the city's credit, but.
Yeah, when they get tax incentives.
Right. They didn't say that specifically, but I know they, they said in their packet that they were giving the locations credit for using their sites.
Thank you. And it sounds like it's time for a CR meeting, CRA meeting, we talked about trolleys, we have the parking garage comp plan. Can we, should we get that on the books, how does that work? We haven't had one.
I think the next one is scheduled, is it June or July? Every three months or so we have CRA.
June.
I, I don't know of a scheduled date, it was based on when you guys are ready for, have one, so if you're asking for.
I thought we were doing it about every three month, three months or so, well, whatever, yeah, okay. I think it's been a couple months since we had one.
Yeah, it has, I've only been to one. Can we get that on the agenda?
They are only scheduled as needed, and at this time, we do not have one scheduled.
Can we get one?
Of course.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to have a 10-year plan conversation with you during the budget cycle. I got you. And I just want to put out there for everybody, everybody, everybody watching. As we go into the budget cycle, staff, please keep this in mind, what I'm going to be looking to do, my goals, and I'm not, I'm willing to see what the numbers are, but I'm looking for a rollback rate or a 4.2, whichever is lower. And I would like to see, at the minimum, ad verum tax be no more than 39.3% of the overall operating budget for the general fund. So in case there's any questions, or there's any doubt of what I'm looking for as we go through, that's my starting point, and we can do anything that's better for the taxpayers, I would be open to it. But those are going to be numbers that I'm looking for as I'm going through the budget cycle. So if staff is starting to work on budget in June, please keep that in mind. It will be very hard to get me over those numbers. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. While you left there with budget, I want, I also ask, I'm going to throw this out there real quick, because I have been given some consideration to this, I would like to see a fund balance increase from 25% to 30%. With the cost of everything out there nowadays, and if we should have, have to have a disaster, I'm afraid 25% may not be good. Been comfortable, I'm thinking 30%, but it may even be need more, okay?
I'd be comfortable going to a third.
So we need to maybe look at making that, during the budget cycle, go ahead and doing that as well, okay? The skate park, Mr. Van Wagner referred to, I don't know if you all realize it, but the Volkswagen dealership, one of the things we negotiated with them, they had eight acres of land up there, they used six acres, and they donated two acres to the city, okay? And also did the upgrade of the roads over there, that was part of the give back to the city under that, under that approval. With all the requests I've had for a skate park, okay? We've been looking for land, we've been promoting our teams around, our kids around here for about three, four years, we'll get them a skate park. So I asked Mr. Van Wagner to look into that piece of land and put in a skate park out there, and pickleball court. Now, if you want to bring BMX in, that's fine, I mean, get with Mr. Van Wagner, whatever, Brian Foreman.
I get to brainstorm, I like it.
He's doing all that, but it's two acres of land. And one of the things I already listed on that piece of property is one of the house, is a little house out there. I don't know whether we can use it, convert it to just bathrooms or whatever, but it is already a little house there. I'm not quite sure when we're going to be able to take possession of that. I think we're going to have to wait for Volkswagen to do their CO and everything, or whatever. I'm not sure if Mr. Wa, you can find out when we can really start looking at that and doing things with that. If that's okay with you all, then we can work out that, but that, that's one of the things I really want to, I mean, I had kids lined up in here, you know, at council meeting, asking for the skate park, and they attacked me again the other weekend. So that's what he referring to there, okay? Florida League of Cities, Lake County Florida League of Cities, we, we changed our charters and ordinance and everything a little bit. I'm just throwing this out there, and we renamed it, it's no longer Lake County League of Cities. It's now Florida Heartland League of Cities, okay? And the reason we did that is because not only we include Lake County, but we also bringing in Sumter County, and we looking to bring in Marion County as well, so we can be more representative of this area and give us a little bit more power, okay? So that, that's what went on this past Friday, so at, at the league, Lake City. Mr. Van Wagner, I've been requesting that we host that luncheon in August, okay? It's the second, it's the second Friday at 12 o'clock, okay? Get with Ms. Debbie, and she, she had tell you this, is we've hosted it a couple times before, we do not need to get a speaker. I think the speaker for that one will be Congressman Webster, okay? And that's why they asked us to host it, I was trying to send it to Leesberry, uh, Eustace or somewhere, but Pam Jones came and asked me to host it.
The second, the second Friday of August.
It's always the second Friday, yeah, we, they want us to host the Friday one.
So August 8th.
It's the second Friday at 12 o'clock.
Okay.
So we usually do it in the city center, so Ms. Debbie usually can work out all the details, get with her, and she can usually work out all the detail. We host them before. At noon, it's always at noon. And I'll throw this out there, all council members welcome, city staff, everybody, I mean, it's not just for elected officials and everything. So anybody's welcome to come here and see what's going on with that, okay? But as I say, the speaker is going to be Congressman Webster, so probably Ms. Debbie need to get with Pam, Ms. Pam Jones, on all that and coordinate all that as well, okay?
Okay.
He mentioned Memorial Day, which is May 26th. Also, Mr. Van Wagner, I'm still having a problem with street lighting, so if you can get with, get with him, I had, I had my luncheon last week, there was a lot of concern about lights, lights on West Lake Shore Drive, I guess it was. I haven't ever been down there on West Lake Shore Drive with the dark streets down there, but one resident down there complaining about lights down there being, being kind of dark also. First time I heard complaints about Lake Shore Drive, okay? I know we, we work with, we talked with Ms. Dodd and Jerry before about Escalibur and Hook Street, and Highland, Remo Highland right there behind, and when Dixon Plaza off of Highland, they took down all the, they switched out all the light poles, utility poles out there, took down the lights and now put the streetlights back up. So we need to, need to get them back up, because it's very dark in there. Please, sir, if you can go ahead and see where we can get with that again. If we have to set up another meeting with them and everything, let me know, okay? MSTU, I'm not quite sure what happened within the workshop up there, but I heard they came out with some kind of type of deal with MSTU for Wellness Way, okay? We need to figure out what's going on with that, and probably at the next council meeting, take a vote on what we're going to do with it. This has to be.
Can I give you an update, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
They, they committed to, up to doing 50% of a reduction of the current fees that they're charging the residents. So that's what they have asked that they could do, or that's what they said they're going to do, and then they're going to set it, so. I've talked to the residents, they're appreciative to see that. They're, they, they have concerns if the business center is going to be up and running in two years to take that further burden off of them. So that's a concern I'm hearing from the residents in Wellness Way. So I think that's a fair comment, so, but they said up to 50%. And after talking to some of the commissioners, myself, I, I feel like they're going to do that, and talking to the county manager also.
Well, you know, it's up to us, what we, this council, what we do. We can eliminate it altogether, we can ask for a reduction, whatever, but my thing is, I think at the works, after our workshop, we left it up to the residents and the county to get together and come up with a plan and let us know. And so that's what I'm trying to figure out, exactly what the residents down there want, want us to do.
I agree.
Okay.
How can we best hear from them?
Well, I'm working through, that's why I asked Mr. Van Wagner, because I don't think we have time for another workshop. When you said no workshop earlier, that's a little hesitant, because I thought maybe we would have came back with another workshop with MSTU, because we need to take action on that before June.
I, I can tell you the deadline on that, Mayor, it's 60 days prior to the renewal. So the renewal is October 22nd.
Yeah.
So you've got to take action by or before August 22nd, at the bare maximum. Because you probably have to pass an ordinance at the same time or before that withdraws from it.
Is it, is it, I, I was told it was 60 days prior to we setting the, the amberloren time, the deadline for amberloren, which is July or so.
So under your.
That's why I was told June, okay?
Under your ordinance that joins the Municipal Services Taxing Unit, you have 60 days prior to the, the annual renewal, otherwise it renews automatically for another year.
Just so we don't get in the weeds on this, my understanding was residents were okay with the 50% reduction, but they were concerned about the two years?
That's their concern, they wanted some assurances that this isn't going to continue without businesses taking it also.
And the thing with this, though, is that, as Mr. Wa just said, it's an annual renewal. So if they don't do it at two years, then they have, they have the ability to revolt again.
You do, yeah. That was the, that's the request that we would consider putting a two-year limit on it, unless the business center is moving forward and there, and, and it's in operation. So that's, that's my feedback I've gotten from the citizens in Wellness Way.
I think that's more prudent than a revolt, let's, I think that's a more prudent approach than requiring a revolt, so.
Well, I just, you know, like I say, it's up to them, I'm willing, I want to hear what they have to say, where they going with it. I wasn't in agreement with the rate they had before, really, it was just July for me. But anyway, and I think it was one resident, I can't remember his email, but he sent me an email with other ask and everything. I don't know whether, I thought I sent it to forward that to you as well.
Joe Farmacy.
Right, so if we can get all that together, because we need, like I say, I've been gearing to try to take a vote in June at least, okay? Because I was always told we have to have it done before end of June, so, so we need to get that together, okay? Please, sir, so we can make sure we take care of those down there. And early you said that Wellness Way well on the way, Wellness Way has always been well on the way, but let me say thank you for, for pushing Olympus, that's what we was having trouble with.
Yes.
Olympus, okay? And it's good to hear that they finally deciding to come out of the ground and, and do things down there with Olympus, so thank you for that now. We've really been pushing them and trying to work with them. You talked about meters in the middle, so I don't want to go there too much more. Utility fees, I've been getting a lot of complaints about the cost of our utilities and everything. It made me go back and look at my, at my utility bill, okay? And one of the thing that really jumped out at me is I got, I have an irrigation meter, and whether I use any water or not, I get charged a flat $7 and, $9.70. My irrigation is completely lost, now one drop of water, but I still get charged $9.70. And of course, then I go back and I look at everything, so if I turn my irrigation meter on, they start charging me for every gallon of water I use. Now, I'm hearing what the people saying, I'm kind of tend to agree with them. Why are we charging people this flat rate for just having a meter if they not use it? When you had to pay, like myself, I paid $250 to put that meter in, I thought that was the cost, okay? And everything, same thing with your regular water, you have a flat rate. But in the, after that, I think, I know it used to be, you had the flat rate and you was authorized up to 3,000 gallons, and then you start getting charged additional there. So maybe we need to look at our, our rates and everything. I know our sewer rates, they complaining about the high sewer rates. And especially, I was over there on, what's Fifth Street, the alteration shop there on Fifth Street. Basically, her, like she said, her sewer, she getting charged all this sewer in this utility, and she's a one-person shop, has no trash, don't really have any bathroom, but she gets utility services going there, but she getting charged these high utility rates. So I think we need to look at some of our little small pop mom and pop businesses, and see if we can come up with some kind of way we can help, help them out with these high rates. The building there on the corner of Chestnut and Fifth Street, the utility and the pharmacy there, both of them in the same vote, okay?
And if it be all right, I'll get with Mr. Wa, because I know the former council did vote on the utility rate increase, and there's another rate increase next year, and I believe the following year. So my concern is, I think, I'm no lawyer, so I'm going to leave that to Mr. Wa, but I think we may have backed ourselves into a deal and we're encumbered. But I'll get with our lawyer and let him tell us what the, but I think we might be stuck with the utility rates because of last year's vote.
Well, it was, it was voted upon, and we implemented all that because we had the study done, because rates hadn't been adjusted in years, and they had a company, we had a company come out and adjust it, and all, and they did, we went by their rec, their recommendation. I think we, we have the privilege to go back and say, hey, we're not going to do that or whatever, because.
I'm going to remind you guys that when you voted for that, you voted to bond that money.
Right.
So yes, you are going down a very dangerous path. Y'all borrowed $50 million?
Yeah, and so I agree, and I share your concerns, Mr. Mayor, and I believe Mr. Peterson has expressed this in the past as well. As we go through the budget cycle, I am more than happy to be an advocate and a pencil sharpener for reducing anything that a business or a resident needs to go about the day to day. Anything we can do to minimize what I would call survival.
Right.
I'm, I'm there with you. There are luxuries, and I'm happy to pay for luxuries, and I'm happy to ask people to pay for luxuries, and sometimes luxuries can help subsidize the survival needs. But we do have the challenge of having bonded against that. But I think that we're sitting in a pretty good position financially, and I think Mr. Boer is very creative, and he has a lot of different tools. So I think we can work through that, and I'm willing to make that one of the budget priorities, is to reduce the utilities if we can.
Like I say, I just think, you know, when I go out here and I meet some of the mom and pop places, and they paying these high rates, and you know, and they, and provide, paying fees on some services, they not really receiving.
Right.
Which also is another thing, area I want to talk about, because I know we received this letter in our mail, everybody received this letter from our utilities, talking about curb size pickup. Well, it can't, it went out last January, okay? And what it did was it put in fees, basically right now, if you put out curb size, you cleaning up your yard. If it more than three cubic feet, they will not pick it up.
Oh, I know. What's that about?
It will not pick it up, okay?
It's not good at my house right now.
Because they exceeding three cubic feet, and of course, and then you have to call and get special arrangement and pay additional.
Again, I just need to remind everybody that we voted on this, and this was something that this council did to the residents.
Well, yes, I'm taking a look at some of this stuff, because it's, well, be honest with you, I, I fought against this kind of stuff years ago, before I was on the council, when they tried to do all these things. And I think our sanitation, our public work department do a fantastic job. But the problem I have here, for example, individual had his, went out clean, cut some of his trees, had a young man, he's 78 years old, so he had a young man come cut trees down in his yard, put it out there, I get a call, because the city wouldn't pick it up if it more than three cubic feet. Hi, Elva, I'm sitting there saying, okay, suppose I take half of the power or whatever, and leave three cubic feet out here and put the rest in the backyard, would you pick it up? Yeah, so next week I can come back and put up the other three feet, and put it back out here, and you'll pick it up, there's no additional charge. and you'll pick it up, there's no additional charge.
Right.
I mean, it's not calculating to me, okay?
Well, and it's okay, we try things.
Here's the problem, how often do a resident do this?
Yeah.
This guy probably would never do this again.
I do it.
Oh, I know you do it a lot.
Do you want me to look at a resolution to reverse that vote that the city council made?
Well, I understand what they trying to do, because I have one of the problems in my neighborhood, where I got people coming in from the outside and dumping trash, and I just had to have the city come pick up probably over 10 cubic feet that's been sitting there for over three weeks because it came in from the outside. But I've also taken other action with Chief Grasik to try to figure out who's doing this, okay? And I know that's what they trying to do, people are trying to stop this, but when we know it's a resident that cleaned their yard and put this debris out here, I think we need to make some exception, maybe look at it.
So do you want me to look into, with Christian, how we can, 'cause we'll have to change the vote? I mean, you'll have to vote on that.
Yeah, I think...
'Cause it was a city council vote.
What I'm hearing is we want Stony to take a look at the fees, the services.
We can, but it wasn't Stony that implemented these things.
Right, and then bring it back to us.
Right.
And things, we try things, they don't work, we fix, we adjust, it's okay.
Like here, like I say, this went out last January, like over three cubic yards, $36 extra fee, and then four, it was 48, you know? So, but I'm like, okay, if I, I told my guy when he come, I say, I tell you what, take half of it and put it back in the backyard, and they'll pick it up. Now, granted, the city went ahead and picked it up for it and everything without having to go through those changes, but I'm saying, hey, this not, this not really computing to me.
Yeah.
If I can put three feet out here today, and you'll pick it up and then come back and other week, three feet, that's kinda inconvenient, our citizen, and those like myself, I put some trash out the other day, did some cleaning in my yard and threw it all out there, the first time I did something in six months. Are we giving back the fee that we charge them every month for picking up that? No.
Well, it's inconvenient for staff, too, because now they're having to come out twice to the same property for the same issue, and they could've just picked it up the first time.
I'm just saying, maybe we need, I have no problem if people is trying to abuse the system and putting this trash out, charging them and everything, but when it's our residents, we need to maybe have some kind of common sense and look at that a little bit better.
I will bring something back to you, it just probably will require a vote, 'cause you all had a previous vote implementing that, so it's not a staff...
Yep, we're good.
But we'll, I'll bring you a presentation of some type, how to undo it.
Yeah, well, okay, we talked about that, and last thing I wanna do, I'm not sure, I think you got this letter, Mr. Van Wagner, and I read these things when they come to me, because I don't like sending them to you all, 'cause I'm scared if I send correspondence like this, it'd be violation of sunshine law. So when I get emails and attaboys and stuff like that, I like to...
Is that the one that you're talking about, about kudos to the city staff?
Yeah.
'Cause it's in our little folder.
Oh, did you, you all got it? Did they put it in there? Okay, I didn't look through the folder. From the gentleman that built the, the state, the hotel down there.
I was hoping you'd not forgot, but it's here.
But I want the public to hear this as well, 'cause, and it's to the city of Clemout, I am building the Staybridge Suites in the Hammer Ridge development at 3440 South US Highway 27. I have been working on this deal since March 2022 with the city and near the end of our project. Our goal is to be open by the end of June 2025. Throughout the course of this deal, I have been extremely impressed with the Building Service Division and their willingness to support my project in a prompt manner. From permit, for permitting questions to inspection, the Building Services Department has been exceptionally helpful. Sadly, this is not so common anymore. Lisa has been a great source of information, who constantly replies quickly. John, Mr. John, he left, okay, helped me get through the site permitting and questions with the county. Larry has always been resourceful and prompt on his inspection. Danny with, with the fire department has also been timely and informational with his inspection. With a team like this, it has been a pleasure to develop in Clemout. We have developed over 10 hotels in Florida in five different counties, and this team has been one of the best I've worked with. I wanted to share my positive experience with the city council, deputy mayor and interim mayor, okay, managed, city manager, yes, name, my team and I will be part of the city of Clemout for years to come as we own and manage the hotel, along with Ben, the CGC. Again, I wanted to share my positive feedback, as in today's environment, we don't hear that as much. Thank you, and that's why I wanna take time, I like to take time when I get these sounding things.
Thank you for sharing that.
Okay, but I...
And kudos to staff, that's awesome.
Kudos to city staff.
That's a big change.
And I, I often tell them when I go to their breakfast and everything, how all the comments and stuff I get, I mean, we've always had great staff here and everything, and I mean, I've seen them pick up and the morale comes a great way, deal since the time I became mayor and everything, and they just do a tremendous job. I get comments from people out of town, they out picking up trash, they one dropped trash one day, not at just my house, one house, but the house next to me, and he actually got up and picked up the trash that didn't go into the dump. And friends from Miami were visiting, and they says to me, they always do stuff like that, and you know what they would do in Miami, just drove off and left, and I said, no, we have good staff, people, so, and that's, that's what we get. So again, the last thing I wanna say again, think about the forensic audit, okay? If you wanna do that, I mean, we have to take a vote on that and set the parameters for that and everything, so at the next meeting or whatever. I think we have to get Mr. Waugh involved with that and everything and everything, help set that all up, so, but I think it's something we need to do.
We're saving the money on hiring a search firm, we could use that to hire a forensic audit firm.
May I mention one thing, Mr. Mayor? I'm going on vacation, everybody, so I'm leaving on Thursday, and I'll be back in the office the Friday of the, next week, so I'll be gone for a week.
Enjoy your vacation, I enjoy, I enjoy my week away on the cruise, so. Is there anything else that need to come before the council?
No, thank you.
Oh, oh, the other thing, Mr. Wagner, I forgot to say this, with the utility bills, one of the things I noticed on my bill, they never, they don't show how much I actually pay on my bill each month anymore. It used to be there, but now they don't, they don't show that I sent X number of dollars to the city on my bill now.
Okay.
Years ago, I know they changed the billing format here a few months ago, prior to that, they would show individual how much you actually paid on your bill and everything, but the new format, they're not doing it, okay? So if you can have, see if we can't put that back in there, I appreciate it, thank you. Anything else? If nothing else, meet in the journey.